Ladies and gentlemen, can we have your attention?
Can you hear us in the back? Are we saying no or yes? Okay, I see people raising their hands up and thumbs up, so I'm assuming that they can hear us in the back. If any time you can't hear us, maybe somebody can reach out and wave or something and we can start to tell. Okay? This time I'm gonna call the San Dimas-Laverne joint special session to order. And I'm gonna ask Mayor Hepburn to lead us in the site selection.
Those that can rise, please rise. Face the flag, right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Being as this is a joint meeting of both city councils, I'm going to ask the city manager, Chris Constantine, to take the role.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the city of San Dimas, council member Ryan Vienna.
Here.
Council member Eric Weber.
Here.
Council member Eric McConaughey.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem John Ebner.
Here.
Mayor Emmett Bedar.
Here.
All city council members of the city of San Dimas are present. I will now turn it over to Ken Domer, the city manager of Laverne. Thank you, men. Council member Steve Johnson.
Here.
Council member Wendy Lau.
Present.
Council member Michelle Caschetaguita.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rick Crosby is excused absence. Mayor Tim Hepburn.
Present.
Thank you. Some just basic logistics. Thank you for all coming. As you can tell, there's a large amount of individuals in the room. Behind me, behind this wall, there's a male and female bathroom. So this is where you can go. We ask that you do it from the back of the room so as to not interrupt the flow of the current meeting. Should there be a need for evacuating the building due to a fire or any other alarm, access points are in the back corners, the side doors, as well as the side doors where the deputies are. There's access points on all sides of the building to be able to evacuate the building. We ask that you evacuate in an orderly fashion. Mr. Mayor, I will now turn it to you.
Thank you. I just wanna welcome everybody here to the city of San Dimas. Yes, sir. Well, whoever's speaking in front, please stand up when you're speaking so we can see who it is. We can't see you back if you're like in a hole. Well, let's hope this court goes that way. I'm not sure exactly if it was designed this way. But I just wanna thank you for coming and showing the world what a community looks like. We often get each other about San Dimas and Laverne, but this is what we are all about. And so, thank you all for coming. We, uh, I hope nobody had a real problem finding San Dimas City Hall. But if you did, you're not here, but I bet you people keep coming. But welcome. I think this is a good opportunity for Supervisor Barker to hear what's going on and for what National Corps can hear what people are, you know, feel about the project and for us to get some straight information. And I think that's what everybody's looking for. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor Hepburn to say a few words and then we'll go from there.
Good evening, everybody. How's it going tonight? I wanna thank the city of San Dimas for inviting us here. And I think this is an important subject and something that's going in our communities that's gonna directly affect all of us. I wanna also thank the fifth supervisor, Catherine Barker, who has been instrumental in helping us to kind of navigate through this and tell us where we're at, what's going on. I wanna thank National Corps for being here to answer the questions for our residents. But at the end of the day, it takes people, it takes groups like this. If there's something going on we're not happy about, we need to talk about it. But we need to also know about it before we have to talk about it. So there's another situation. And that's for us tonight. But I just wanna thank you all for being here. This shows that we're all concerned. This shows that our cities are concerned and we work together. It's called teamwork and we really appreciate you all being here tonight. Thank you. Right now, I'm gonna open it up for my council members to just some brief statements on this, what we're dealing with tonight. I also wanna say that Mayor Pro Tem Rick Crosby is, his daughter is in a golf tournament in Ohio and she's doing extremely well. And so that's where he is. He's with family. That's where we should be with our kids, when they're in school. And she's doing amazing. So that's where he is tonight. And he does support with all the council regarding this development that we wanna know why. I will start with Councilmember Wendy Lau.
Good afternoon, good evening, evening. And I just wanna reiterate, thank you to everybody who is here tonight. It's really important for your voices to be heard. I think for National Corps, I hope that you take a moment to really listen to what all these residents have to say. I think that we can all agree that the homelessness issue is a problem. However, I think that by force does not mean, or by right does not mean by force. And so engagement of the community is really important. So I appreciate you taking the time to sit here and listen to the important things that these people have to say. This is their neighborhood. This is where they've lived for however many years. And it's important to take that into account. So thank you, everybody, for being here. I know it's the Fourth of July week, so thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules.
Councilmember Steve Johnson.
I just wanna say thank you for being here. This is a very important issue for the entire community. We do wanna listen to hear what National Corps does have to say. Please be cordial. And let's get what we want. Thank you.
Councilmember Mayor Caschetaguita.
Good evening, everybody. First and foremost, thank you, God, for allowing us to be here today. And I wanted to share what so many people have told me today. Just like the folks have the right to build, we have the right to live. And we have the right to live in this great country that so many men and women have sacrificed their lives so that we have the freedom to live here in this great country. So God bless America's Independence Day and let's all share some good thoughts today. Stay strong.
At this time, I'd like to introduce the San Dimas City Council for to say a few words. Councilman McConaughey.
Good evening and thank you for coming. Welcome to the city of San Dimas. I come here to listen to all of you and I am grateful and thankful that all of you have exercised your right. What better time than during Fourth of July week to show your right to assemble, freedom of speech and the rest. And so I look forward to the discussion and dialogue that will happen today and hope that we can come to some sort of solution or agreement as we move forward through this process. The only request I have is that, I know that at times things can get very heated. My request is that the homeless, those experiencing homelessness, you know, they, some of them do in fact experience drug addiction and mental illness, but many of them do not. And so as we talk about them, as we characterize them, I just wanna make sure that we're talking about them and humanizing them and that we are speaking to one another and about the situation constructively. With that said, I can't wait to hear your views and everything that you have to share. And I'll pass it over back to the Mayor for additional comments from my colleagues. Thank you again for coming tonight.
This time, I'd like to turn the mic over to Councilman Weber.
I don't wanna hang down in the stands, sorry. Uh, thank you all, like everybody said, for coming out tonight. Everybody being here is super important, especially National Corps. Thank you for being here as well. Um, I just wanna say that I think it's really important to keep in mind that when faced with a project of this type, scope and location, the community begins to start asking the questions that I think are objectively reasonable at face value. And many of these questions, while they may be perhaps very forward, these can be avoided almost entirely when we engage in communication and are transparent on the front end. These are key tenants transparency and communication that lead to trust and legitimacy in any process. And I think we can see when a process is hurried, perhaps although legally allowed, it leads to breakdowns. And I think we've seen that in this case for sure. And misunderstandings and miscommunications abound. So when this happens, it's very difficult, a long road, to regain that trust and legitimacy back. And I just wanna convey this sentiment that it has been conveyed to me many times on behalf of community members. And that's that this isn't personal against National Corps, against anybody in the county or the cities. But members of our community really value the atmosphere that both Laverne and San Dimas share. And that's something that they wanna protect and that is something that they do take personally. So, thank you.
I'm gonna steal a saying out of the mayor's playbook. When you go last, everyone said already, everything important, so there's not much less to say. But I will say this. I came here tonight to listen to you and I want to acknowledge National Corps and thank you for participating in this. And I think the past is the past, we're in the present. And I think you guys have demonstrated in collaborating with the supervisor and her office and her staff, a willingness to listen. So I commend you for that. And I wanna thank the supervisor and your staff for doing everything that you've done to get us to where we're at today. I also wanna say something that my colleague, Councilmember McConaughey, talked about. You know, last meeting, someone from the community went up. And I love her, I don't know where she is, but her name's Rachel Barbosa. And I'm gonna say this. I stand with her on the issue of addressing homelessness in our city. And I've been very vocal about that, if you paid attention to the meetings in the past of the council. I don't know if this is the right place or the right space to do that. But I 100% agree that we need to do something about homelessness in our city. And so we've collaborated, I think, regionally to do that. We've worked together with our cities around here. And I really, really pray and hope that we all are very respectful of each other tonight because I think we can all agree, and it was even most recently shown on our community survey in San Dimas, at least for the residents here in San Dimas, that one of the number one things that people want handled is homelessness. And so I think we really need to keep that in mind as we have this discussion. And I do think that as we have this discussion, that we are respectful and mindful of everything. And most of you know pretty well where I stand on this particular project. But I do ask that knowing that, that you are respectful of each other and all the different views that are here because I think we can all agree that no one wants to turn their back here on homelessness. I think the issue that most have said has to deal with a number of things, from location to size to placement to location with the schools and other things of that nature. So I please ask that we do that. I thank all of you for coming out tonight and participating. Civic engagement is one of the most powerful things we can do. And I thank you for that. So have a good night and have a fortuitous evening.
Mayor Pro Tem John Ebner. Good evening, everybody. I guess it goes without saying that this whole process got off to a pretty rocky start. But I wanna echo something that Ryan just said, that that was a few months ago and now we're where we are. I wanna thank National Corps for listening along the way and making some modifications to a point, looking forward to some more. I especially wanna thank Supervisor Barker, who had her office and her planners have been working hard to make this project powerful if you can get to that point. And then lastly, I wanna thank the community for coming out. One of my favorite things about being on the city council, every meeting and everything like this, is hearing from what people have to say. So come up, speak your mind and try to fit it into that time window. And we really look forward to hearing what you have to say. Thanks a lot. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce Supervisor Catherine Barker. She has a few words she might wanna say.
Well, first of all, I wanna thank you all. I've said all along, and I, prior to being a supervisor, I handled this issue, health, mental health, children's services and welfare. And I've said, and I've told Corps this, in order for a project to work, the community has to be behind it. And there's been some misinformation in terms of this being a county project. It is not a county project. The only goal the county had was they applied for a grant, a $7 million grant, which we pulled back and we found out, or I pulled back and we found out that they had not done community outreach. Because as I've said, the community needs to be involved. So I appreciate the acknowledgement as it relates to the role that our office played. I wanna thank Corps who did modify the project. But make no mistake, this is not, this is a private property and a nonprofit putting together a proposal. And because the state changed the laws, it's called a by right. And I'm as frustrated as you are because I like to fix things. And this is very frustrating for me because I hear loud and clear. And I wanna thank you all for using your voices. We've heard you, I've heard you. I wanna thank my staff who has been finally a picky out of my San Dimas office. But we need to hear from you. Because this is not the only project I'm dealing with. I'm dealing with it throughout the entire unincorporated area. These projects are coming up because they are by right. And one of the things I've challenged the cities to and that we're gonna work on is we need to force the legislature to modify the existing law so that they have to conform with the community standard districts in both the unincorporated but also the city. Because I can complain all I want, but I have to look for a solution. And that is the one solution. Because it's happening in unincorporated, it's only a matter of time before it happens in Laverne and San Dimas and other cities. So I wanna work with you, I promise you that. I look forward to hearing from you. I wanna thank you for using your voice. This, first of all, it was the best pledge of allegiance I've ever heard. That was a powerful one. It was, and then it's kinda like, but more importantly, know that you are being heard. And I think that with a lack of respect for politics today, I want you to know that we hear you loud and clear. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Barker. Just a matter of my interest, would you please raise your hand if you plan on speaking tonight? Okay, seeing the number of people that are raising their hand, I am going to make an executive decision after I go to sleep with them. We're going to change it to three minutes. Okay? But I would ask you at the end of three minutes, you know, have to be respectful to everybody in the, you know, in the audience. Stop at three minutes and move on. And I, you know, I would hate to have to say please. You know, suggest if you don't mind, if you have the time up there, and then we're gonna go. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tim, who's going to introduce both the city managers and who are gonna give you some ground rules for getting to that podium and saying what's on your mind.
I think he just said that, but that's good, thank you. First of all, I wanna introduce Chris Constantine. If you don't know, he's the city manager of San Dimas. Thank you, Chris. You've been a leader in this also. And we really appreciate what your city have done. So round of applause from Chris. Also for our city manager, Ken Domer, city of Laverne, again. They've been, they've been working back and forth on this with our county supervisors, the county supervisor staff and all the entities involved to give us this information to our residents to let us know where we are, what's going on, how we can all work together to discuss this and figure out what path we're gonna take on this. So with that, I'm gonna, as Mr. Bedar said, I'm gonna, you guys are gonna lay out the ground rules for tonight's meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor Hepburn and Mayor Bedar. So this is an official special meeting of the city council intended to receive presentation and input from the public. And so during, in accordance with the Brown Act, we provide an opportunity for the public to be able to address the governing body. And so we've allocated three minutes for each individuals that wish to speak to come forth to the podium and be able to speak. While we do not require a card, I know that we have them floating around out there. So if you filled out the cards, we will take the cards, we will go in that order. But as soon as we've exhausted those cards, we will open it up for anybody else who desires to come forth and be able to make the presentation. Knowing that each presentation could be up to three minutes, what we ask is no more than three individuals line up so that the speaker who has three minutes, the two others are an additional six. No more than 10 minutes is somebody going to be standing at the podium. And I think that's more efficient than having a lineup of 20 people or one person in trying to figure out who's gonna be next. In terms of the process, we're very thankful to have National Corps who graciously decided to do a presentation here first. We will then go to the Department of Regional Planning, who's also in attendance, the Los Angeles County Development Authority, LACTA, and Los Angeles County Homeless Services Authority. And we're especially grateful for Supervisor Barker's office and for staff that have come tonight to also support and provide information as necessary. We will go through all the speakers. There is no end time in terms of the meeting. So in some cases, councils establish an end time at, let's say, eight o'clock. And at eight o'clock, the meeting has to stop in accordance with the Brown Act. There is no end time with regard to here. So if during the course of the meeting, you were not raising your hand, wanting to speak, and you're hearing something and then desired to speak, you will have that opportunity to be able to address the council. So rest assured, we'll get through all of you. As the mayors have mentioned, it is a public meeting. We know that the issues are contentious. We also know that regardless of what's being stated, it doesn't necessarily mean that your position will change. We understand the fervor that's in our communities. But what we ask, we are in a public meeting where the goal is to try to solicit as much input in terms of the process and hope that National Corps and others take that input and utilize it for the best interest of our community. And that's the ultimate goal. Once we complete the public input process, we will turn it over to the city council for clarifying questions that they may have of any of the four entities that presented today. We will offer the opportunity for the project participants to be able to respond to concerns that you would have, that you raised or that the council raises. So if you have a concern, say, of elevators, it will not necessarily be addressed at the moment you're speaking. Staff are taking that down, as are the four entities, to be able to address those. And we're gonna try to get through all of them so you get some sort of response to something you would have raised here at the dais. After the project participants, we will turn it back to the city council and offer them an opportunity to close, each and every one of them, and then close the meeting and adjourn that. And so that will be the process. Ken, would you like to add?
Chris, just a clarifying question. At the last meeting, there were questions from members of the public for which some of the members of the public desired responses to, to pause their time. How are you going to handle that in this particular meeting? Should they state all of their questions with the expectation of getting the responses? However, last meeting, some of those responses did not materialize. So how are we going to manage that?
So we have both staff and the project participants writing down what those questions are to be able to get to them. The goal is to get to them after all speakers have presented, to ensure that we're not stopping the flow of those who want to speak. The goal is to try to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to come forth on the table to provide those.
And will the questions be, the questions are gonna be recorded and then it sounds like they'll be, you know, repeated to the respondent who's gonna answer them? Is that what we can expect to happen?
The respondent will be able to respond to what was raised. Staff will follow up and ensure that something appears to be missed to ask the questions of the participants to be able to get the answer.
I'm sure the room will let you know.
And yes, I'm very sure our communities are very engaged, which is the best part of living in Laverne and San Dimas. So thank you. With that, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor. I will actually start calling the speakers. Each speaker has three minutes, so I will read three names that are... I'm sorry. Yes. First, we will turn it over to the four project participants, starting with National Corps.
Thank you, good evening, council members and community members. We look forward to hearing from you tonight. Based on feedback we've already received, wanna share some updates. Also wanna take a few minutes and share a little bit more about who National Corps, the Hope for Housing Foundation are. Tonight, you'll be hearing from a few of us. My name's Greg Bradmore. I'm a senior vice president for National Corps and also president of the Hope for Housing Foundation. We also have with us Michael Delatorre, who is our senior vice president of development for the Los Angeles region. A.J. Golke, who's the director of permanent supportive housing and resident services for the Hope for Housing Foundation. And also Courtney Richard, who is our vice president of property management. So I'm starting to share a little bit about who National Corps is. Some of you know National Corps is a locally based affordable housing organization. We are based, we were founded 30 years ago and dedicated to using affordable housing as a platform to elevate the health, the well-being and the self-sufficiency of our residents. We are a nonprofit, that is our mission. Our mission is all about creating environments where the most vulnerable in our community can be served and where they can grow, where they can thrive, where they can be successful. You can see we have over 10,000 apartment units that we operate, over 30,000 residents. That includes children, families, seniors, special needs populations as well. And we're what we call vertically integrated, which means we do our own development and planning, we do our own construction, we do our own property management and also supportive services. So what that means is that when we build a building we care about, we're gonna be managing it long term, which means we want it to be successful for our residents. We want it to be successful for the community as well. But like I said, at the end of the day, this is really about people. It's about those most vulnerable, in this case, homeless seniors in our community who need that housing. And our goal is to help make them be successful. So with that, I'm gonna introduce Michael Delatorre, who will share a little bit about the project and some updates that we made there.
Thank you, Greg. So first of all, I'd love to touch out on why we're here. Currently, Los Angeles County has a list of goals and priorities. And it ranges from the location, the population and who we're servicing. And what we did at National Corps was present a proposal that aligned with those housing goals. I wanted to talk a little bit about our site selection and why we're here. So currently, California is in a housing crisis. There's just not enough homes being built in Southern California. We've seen that with the latest homeless count exceeding 75,000 homeless individuals in the county of Los Angeles. Based on some of our community feedback meeting with these groups, what we've done is we refined our development proposal with some of the feedback and working with the supervisor's office. The first thing we did was revise the tenant population to focus on seniors 55 plus. We've also reduced the building house from four stories along foot hill and three stories on the south of the property. We've also increased the setback on the southern portion of the property exceeding county requirements. We've also created a drive aisle between the Montessori School and our housing development. And of course, we included landscaping along the southern portion of the property. Again, we revised the elevation and the architectural style to hopefully better reflect the community, bringing it down to height and adding some articulation to the building. Here's a few that you're able to see, the three-story setback along the single-family homes to the south of the property. And again, our buildings will have a community center for our residents. This is a sample of some of our amenities that will be provided onsite. We have open space onsite for our residents. We also will have a tech center, case management offices, property management offices, and a community center for our residents to gather. Again, here are our summary of our changes to this development. Again, changing the resident population, reducing the height, increasing setbacks, including a landscaping buffer and a setback for the Montessori School. And we've reduced the number of apartment homes totaling 43 units. Yeah, 42 for supportive housing and one onsite property management unit. We're gonna turn it over to A.J.
So a lot of the questions we've received previously were really about the population here and some of the concerns about the population. So we wanna talk a little bit about the services that we provide, how we manage our properties, which make all the difference in making sure that that population is safe and that they are healthy and they can be successful. So National Corps has a partner organization, the Hope for Housing Foundation, that I head up. And Hope exclusively provides services across all of our 90 properties. We both have staff who provide direct services and then we partner and contract with many other organizations to provide these services as well. There's a lot here that I'm not gonna walk through all of that.
There's a lot here that I'm not going to walk through all of that, but what you can see is we partner with nonprofits, government, universities, hospitals, churches, any organizations needed to bring the resources to help those individuals be successful. Our programs range from after-school programs for kids to financial coaching and education for our adults, to for our seniors. On the bottom right, you can see we provide healthcare and benefits, food distribution, fitness classes, mental wellness to our seniors, as well as case management and other mental health services for those with special needs as well. So our goal is to provide every type of service needed to these residents. Michael alluded to it, there's a great need for senior affordable housing. You might know that the fastest-growing homeless population in America today are seniors. Many of those are past teachers, they're individuals who have had a crisis in their life, they've maybe had a medical issue, they've had an accident that's caused them to fall into homelessness, and those individuals need housing. That's the first step in helping them get healthy again. Just in the Los Angeles County Service Planning Area, or SPOT 3, where we sit here, the homeless point-in-time count recently showed 5,000 individuals experiencing homelessness total. Almost 600 of those were over the age of 55, and a 340% increase in homelessness among those over age of 70. So clearly, a huge need in this region. The services for our seniors on this property, the Hope for Housing Foundation would be providing services, we'll also be partnering with the Los Angeles County Department of Health Services, providing services, as well as the People Concern, which is a dedicated case management organization that would provide one-on-one individual case management plans and service plans for every one of our residents. With that, I want to turn it over to A.J. Golka, who's our Director of Permanent Supportive Services.
Thank you, Greg. So a lot of the work that we do, as you can see, the numbers for seniors are going up astronomically. It's about helping fellow humans. We're seeing so much changes in the homeless population post-pandemic, what we kind of say, post-pandemic. A lot of folks have gone through mental health crises, they've gone through job loss, they've gone through aging or health crisis, things that all of us in this room experience. So our approach is really approach, how I think any of us would hope that someone would approach us with is trauma-formed care, wraparound case management services, that a time can be intensive when needed. So really looking at each person's story, each person's needs, and the right dosage of intervention. Physical health care, peer support. Peer support is someone who's had that same experience that can relate. How amazing is it to connect with someone that has a shared experience as you? They feel and see something that maybe you guys can relate on, and you can create a pathway to change, a pathway to increasing connections in some way, shape, or form. Legal assistance, whether it be tickets or other things, helping people work through that, reconnecting with family. Medication management, transportation services. We're lucky that the VA does allow the transportation, PAST's transportation, other programs that we can coordinate with ongoing. Employment services. Folks, 55 years or older, my brother is 54. 55 is young. And looking at different ways that people can get back to work, figuring out ways of self-sufficiency in some way, shape, or form, even if folks, you know, maybe work more limited hours, finding ways to have that purpose, that sense of connection to the community and supporting in some way, shape, or form, a business, a purpose in some way, shape, or form. Social activities and life skills training. Sometimes there's, you know, figuring out how to use a thermostat, a convection oven. I know sometimes I try to figure out my air fryer. So figuring out different things that we can support our neighbors on feeling most connected to their homes. And then just by definition, permanent supportive housing is meant to be wrapped around a person's unique needs, meaning that there's indefinite services, indefinite subsidy, so the rent is not a question, the rent is paid, and supports are there, pillars of support all around them. Whatever the needs may change or evolve over time, they're there to help them be successful in their housing. Assistance for folks that have disabilities in various ways, whether it be connecting to services, supports that they need related to their disability, having a unit that's more shaped for their needs, whether it be vision impaired, physical impaired, any which way, we try to figure out ways to support folks. And then overall driver, and I think the overall purpose is to make sure people stay housed, you know, not cycling back. You know, our overall intention across, I think, our entire team of Hope and Core is to do whatever it takes to keep people housed, and in their homes, and safe, and thriving, and having a safe place to put their head down at night. So the key elements that we focus on within our permanent supportive housing is affordability, to ensure that stability, you know, that paycheck-to-paycheck that a lot of us experience is not an issue for them to stay housed in their circumstance. Safety and comfort, ensuring it's a quality space to live, it's a quality space to look at as a neighbor passes by. Supportive services that are accessible, flexible, targeted residential stability, meaning we ask the residents what they need. Do they need food support? Do they need onsite grocery pickup? Anything that we can do to offer those supports and the needs, any of us would really appreciate it, will we do that for our residents? Empowerment independence. Every single person that moves into their unit, whether they experience homelessness or not, are independent. They're not conserved individuals, they've experienced hardship, and this is their place of solace. This is their place of accessing services and having a roof of their head to gain stability. It's a blessing and a gift that we provide this to other common beings. Sorry, guys. The next slide is our experience. We've done this a very long time. We have a really large portfolio, and we have a lot of experience. Over 608 units across California and other states, 25 sites of vulnerable populations like Greg mentioned, a wide variety of populations, whether it be our veterans that have served our country, that might experience PTSD or medical needs that need that extra support and stability to stay housed, or our seniors, or transitioned into foster youth, or families. It's diverse. It's a variety of stories of how folks got there. 708 units, 21 sites that are in our pipeline, whether they're in development, they're in construction, so we have a lot of units coming onboard. Sorry, guys. I think that is our last slide. Thank you for listening.
That concludes the presentation, but we look forward to hearing your feedback from the room and responding later.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dave DiGrassia, and I'm here from the Department of Regional Planning. So I just wanted to give a brief update on the planning process, how the entitlement process works for a project like this, and then let you know where we're at in that process. So as the supervisor mentioned earlier, because this is 100% affordable supportive housing, state law does require that we apply a ministerial permit for this. What ministerial means is we have limited authority to make changes or to deny this project if it complies with all of the county's codes and regulations. And so where we're at right now is we're still reviewing it. Two county departments are still taking a look at it. We expect to have information back from them shortly. If all goes well with that, it could possibly be approved later this summer, possibly early fall. And that is where we're at. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Emilio Salas. I'm the Executive Director of Los Angeles County Development Authority. We are the entity that provides the funding, or that provided the funding, debt financing for this particular project. We are the county's community economic and affordable housing development arm. So we do quite a variety of things on behalf of the county, but as part of that process, we also administer the Section 8 program, the Housing Authority, on behalf of the county. So we are the administrators of the Section 8 program. And I say this to paint the larger picture really of the things that we do aside from providing funding, we're also housing providers ourselves. So we know what it's like dealing with families that have lived with trauma in a public housing site, and we serve over 30,000 families with our Section 8 program. So we see firsthand people that are living on the margins, that were it not for that rental subsidy, many of them would find themselves either couch surfing or, worst case scenario, living on the streets as well. In the case of this particular project, we were the entity that provided...
Can you hear that better?
We were the entity that provided the final piece of funding. Sorry about that. And so let me just explain our particular role. So we had been putting out a notice of funding availability to the developer community that basically provides financing, right, and also vouchers, Section 8 vouchers, to provide for the long-term viability of many of these developments. They responded, National Core responded to our notice of funding availability. Those applications are then, once the application deadline closes, they are scored by an independent third party. They are a group of raters with expertise in their fields. It includes architectural design, it includes supportive services, and it includes affordable housing finance. Those are the areas of expertise. They are then scored on a set of criteria, some of which you saw earlier in the slides. And once they are scored, they are given back to us. We then review their scoring system, review their results, and if there's confirmation, we then proceed with the highest-scoring proposals and move those forward as funding allows. In this particular case, there were a grand total of seven projects that were funded with the entirety of the funds that were available, one of which was this particular project here. And just, so that is our role. Once we do that, we then take it before the board for their final approval, and that's the stage where we're currently at right now. I just want to close by saying that, you know, you saw the homeless count, lots of just came out with their homeless count. It increased by 9% this year, but for seniors, it increased by 11%. So that population in particular certainly is seeing a need for this particular type of housing. And I can tell you, as an entity that has done this since 1998, we've put out over $1.3 billion that resulted in over 22,000 units. We deal with dozens and dozens of nonprofit developers. You're getting a good one. You're getting one that is actually very well-established and very well-respected within the industry. I can tell you that full-heartedly. We've had a lot of projects with National Core, beautiful developments. And I'm sure you've seen some pictures in prior meetings of some of the samples that are developed, so where do people leave this project? Thank you very much.
Good evening, folks. My name is Nathaniel Frigau. I'm with LOSA, the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. Can you hear me now? Okay, apologize. Let me start over. My name is Nathaniel Frigau. I'm with LOSA, the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. I am the Acting Chief Program Officer for LOSA, and I actually do not come with an intent to make a presentation, but to be available to answer questions. Given that I've been slated as a speaker, I will take just a minute. My fellow presenters stole my thunder in terms of the homeless count results. I do want to reiterate that we did see an 11% increase in seniors 64 and older across the county compared to 9% increase for the general population. So we do see an increased need for senior housing across the county. That is not just a county, LA county issue, this is an issue that we are seeing across the nation, as homelessness amongst seniors is rising at an alarming rate across the nation. I do want to share briefly, just hopefully to preempt some questions in terms of how residents will be matched to this building. So this is a project that will be matched to the coordinated entry system, which is the centralized coordination of homeless services across the county. We do work at a regional level, as was mentioned before, at the service planning area level, so that we can have a regional approach to homelessness. I do want to share that, and it's especially relevant, I think, to this project, but we recently passed some additional guidance in how we match individuals to subsidizing it's like these project-based developments that allows for and designates that matching will happen based upon program enrollments within outreach or other services local to the area, and so that we are really focused on allowing folks to be able to remain in the communities that they call home. So while I can't guarantee that every single one of these units will be matched to somebody from San Dimas or Laverne, we do focus at the local area before expanding beyond that. So we would be serving folks locally before serving folks anywhere else within the service planning area. So I will be available to answer any specific questions if there are, but I will be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathaniel. Are there any other follow-up comments by the project participants that you would like to present? Okay. So we'll now take it to public comment. As I mentioned earlier, we have three minutes for each speaker. To the right of the podium here in front, where you will be speaking, you will see a timer that counts down from three minutes. When that timer reaches zero, I believe it's going to buzz, but we will be cutting off discussion at that point in time. If you don't want to speak, or later decide you want to speak, that's not a problem. We'll make sure we make a call for those who desire to speak. I have a number of cards. I'm going to name three names so that the first two or three can come forth and be ready to speak. After we get through the cards, we'll open it up for those who want to come forward, no more than three at the line to be able to present. What we will be doing, along with the project participants, is documenting specific questions that you asked. For example, how many individuals have this house? So I ask, as you're presenting, try to be very clear about the specific question that you're desiring an answer for. Speak a little bit slowly so we make sure we're able to capture that, and by the end, should be able to get through every question that you're getting answered. So with that, we'll start with Mr. Glenn Holt, Pete Slus, and Pat Lees.
Good morning, everybody. I was here last time when we listened to your field on your logistics infusing this site, claiming, what was it, .1 for public transport, a bus? With only, what, 43 people and 16 cars? It's a lot of people riding a bus to go nowhere. You talked about job opportunities in the immediate area, and I asked you guys the question, what's a senior citizen going to do, go wait tables at Mr. D's? Are they going to become a barista at Starbucks? Because those are the businesses you're talking about. None of those are viable for anybody to get back on their feet. Those are teenager jobs for them to get, you know, a little bit of experience in what real life is about. Now, we're going to talk about this area again. You guys are trying to make the changes to make things easy. You guys didn't give us an update on the new cost, since you guys changed it from five stories of 54 units to four stories of 43 units. So let's just go with these old numbers, because that's what I still have in my head. $35 million for 54 units. That's $650,000 per one-bedroom apartment. I live in a million-dollar home, and it could burn to the ground, and it would not cost me $650,000 to build my house again. To me, this is a gross dereliction of LA County's oversight on how our tax money is going to be spent. 100%. $650,000 for one-bedroom apartment. Now let's move on to how you guys subsidize the incomes. 30% is what you guys charge them for the rent of their income, correct? The average, if I remember correctly, the average one-bedroom apartment here in San Dimas and Laverne goes for darn near $2,000, about $1,500 to $1,700 bucks a month. How much money are these people going to make working their jobs that they have to take a bus to? How much per unit are we, the taxpayer, going to be on the hook for? Again, something LA County needs to look into so they're not wasting our tax money like all the other big governments here in California. You guys have a right to build. The problem is, you guys are going with this gold rush of Gavin Newsom's plan to spread homelessness out. That's all you're doing. There's a lack of oversight because of it, and all you're going to do is ruin neighborhoods. You're going to put other people in danger. Why not build, why not build up there in Adelanta? A LA County condo. Over there where it's going to be cheap, because you guys are going to charge, you guys are going to base the value of each one-bedroom apartment, you guys said last time, is based on the average income of the people in the community surrounding it. Million-dollar neighborhood doesn't have people that only make $75,000 a year. Almost everybody that lives in my neighborhood, up there at the San Dimas Canyon Golf Course, whether they're single income or double income, solid six-figure income. You want to put people in there that have skills to do what?
This project would fit well, was made, no. This project would fit in well to make financial sense to taxpayers, and was located in high-density neighborhoods such as Pasadena or Los Angeles. In our neighborhood, it'll be a monument to an ineffective and wasteful government. 16 parking spaces is not adequate for visitor parking, let alone residents. Often unhoused people live in their cars, and this project would then have them give them up. Somehow, while no observable bike traffic currently exists by the site, elderly residents are thought to be willing to risk their lives traveling by bike on a high-speed major thoroughfare in a lane of traffic, and so 54 bike spots are proposed. A single elevator is proposed. Yesterday, I went by the Glendora Library, noticed their elevator was out of service. What are disabled elderly people supposed to do when this occurs and need to leave? At least Glendora has handicap ramps. This project has been poorly thought out. No one deserves three- or four-story apparition, springing up behind their back fence and cowering over them. All by itself, it's easy enough to stop this project in its tracks, but that doesn't consider the most important facts. While this project has been downsized to four stories and 42 units, no mention has been made to adjusting its cost, which is prohibitive. $35 million for 42 units works out to $832,000 per unit. In a city where currently you can buy mobile home units from $99,000 to $250,000 easily, a properly-designed mobile home park elsewhere in LA County could easily house three, four, or 500 currently homeless individuals and be completed in a timely fashion. Quicker, less expensive, more effective, and certainly nicer to live in, rather than an ongoing virtue signaling effort, which would house only 42 and devour a large chunk of our money. Funding this project will only ensure the homeless crisis will continue to extend and expand, while more projects like this continue to be approved and with no end in sight. We need real change, not this posturing, which actually reduces overall harm to total homelessness compared to other available options. I urge everybody to stop funding this stuff.
So Pat, Pat, if I may, before you speak, Pat, get close to the microphone, so that all the folks can hear. The next speaker will be Pam Berry, Carmen Henry, and Danita Bochamp.
My question is to each one of you that are sitting up there, would you allow your preschool child or your children to attend school where they have to pass by and see people urinating in front of them, people crying, solicit them to take drugs, people trying to seduce them, people who steal their money from their lunch money on their way to school? Are you willing to put your preschooler next door to this arrangement? These people that live in these houses have tax issues. You all know that. Do you want them next to your preschool? Would you, can your conscience send your preschooler or your grandchild to a school like that, that is right next to a project that has issues? There are so many locations. We're not going to build any homeless shelters, but pick an appropriate place to put it. You have places like empty warehouses that aren't involving children, that you could put these. Why are you putting it next to our children? What are you going to tell your preschooler when it goes out in the front yard of these? And he says, "I saw the man next door do that"? What are you going to do when they say, they start acting really weird, because some man has come up to the fence and asked them to show them their private property? How are you going to react? How are you going to feel about your preschooler? Well, how do you deal with that? I was asking you, think about your conscience. Can you live with yourself if you put our children at risk of this kind of activity that will go on in front of them? Thank you.
Pam Berry, Carmen Henry, Danita Bochamp.
Good evening. I have a few questions. First of all, you mentioned that Laverne and San Dimas residents would be primary, but otherwise it would stand out to the rest of the, the service planning area. How big is the service planning area, and how far away is that from Laverne and San Dimas? Okay, so now we listened to the presentation. We talked about seniors, 55-plus, vulnerable, support, drive, success, great words, targeting special needs, great words. But the services need to be applied. They're not going to live in that box. They need to be applied in those services, such as jobs, medical, legal services, social opportunities, and a grocery store. So the five-mile radius of opportunities is abysmal. Support services in actual application are not accessible, which hinders their independence that you want to promote. Not the right place at all. They are set up for failure. Off-site isolation is far inaccessible services. So I'm going to take you on a little walk. Most of us can visualize it. If you can't, drive by there tonight, please. There's no sidewalk in front of the place. I see there, you got a sidewalk. Does it stop there, or does it go all 100, 1,050 feet up to the bus stop? They can't walk in the gravel. It's a very narrow road. It's a very busy road. And up at the top, right before the bus stop, it's not even wide enough for a sidewalk. Now, if I continue from the bus, if they're walking or riding a bike, to go across a freeway on-ramp, under a freeway overpass that merges from two lanes to one, very dangerous, cross a freeway off-ramp, and go well over a mile to get to Sprouts, which is the identified grocery store you have for them as a service, not even safe for 55-plus, you're setting them up for failure. So, I fell off the line. Okay, so we got the sidewalk. You're trying to walk there. You're trying to get there. There's no really accessible services. Jobs, the nearest hospital is in Pomona. It's the wrong place. It's not going to help them. They're going to be locked in that little box, or trying to figure out where they can go for what they need. You need to find a better place. That one is not going to work.
Carmen Henry, Danita, and Steve Daniels.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. This is my husband, Tom. He's been in the neighborhood for 29 years, and by the looks of this, it looks like a resort. However, someone didn't do their homework. This little thing is on 0.65 acres, acre? Not even, a little over half an acre. You're going to squeeze this into that little area, and on top of that, those poor people are going to live in there? They're not going to just stay in their rooms. They're going to be out on the bound. I live across the street from that neighborhood. You guys don't care, because you guys lived somewhere else. But I want to tell you, and I pray, I pray to God that it doesn't happen, because if someone gets hurt, it's on you guys. Each of you, I, I love the way that he described his help for everybody. Well, I certainly hope that there will be help for us when we accidentally hurt someone. This past Saturday, I had to call the police, because somebody was laying there. Some people just don't want to get help. Some people do want to get help. I've worked in education. I know how it is. But some people have mental issues. That's the real issue that you should be addressing, using one of your avenues to go ahead and help those people, to really get the help that they need. I was looking on your internet. The facilities that you have are huge. This is one of the smallest ones you, you have, and then it also has East LA County. Well, will you be bringing those people from East LA instead of helping the people from Laverne? Will you? Probably not. Or maybe so. That's on you guys. However, I know that Mayor Bass wants to get all of the homelessness, and mind you, I'm a very compassionate person. I love everyone. I love God. But one of the things I cannot stand is for people to poke the wool over my eyes. Okay? So those people, if, if that happens, they should be ones from Laverne or San Dimas, if it does happen.
Real quick, my name is Thomas Henry. It's a 43 up, been, uh, development. Where's your compassion for housing people in such a small, little area? They're, they have issues with elderly issues and mental issues, medication issues. They're going to be out and about. There's a danger to them on that busy, busy foothill of Boulevard. The accidents and the, and the trauma caused to them and motors that have, that have to live with that trauma is disgraceful. If, if with the money you're spending, you can spend it much better than someone else.
The next speaker is Danita, Steve Daniels, and Julie Salzar.
Good evening. My name is Danita Bochamp. I'm a 35-year resident of Laverne. I want to thank LA County Supervisor Catherine Barker and her staff, both city councils from San Dimas and Laverne, as well as LA Regional Planning, National Corps, for making themselves available to meet in person with the residents and the business owners that are affected by this proposed housing project. National Corps' founder and former CEO Jeffrey Burham was indicted for money laundering and political bribery. National Corps! In National Corps' second Zoom meeting, they showed a video with former LA County Supervisor for District 3 Sheila Kuehl, who is currently being investigated for money laundering. Former LA City Council 8th District Mark Ridley Thomas was indicted and convicted of bribery and fraud, and Current Price, a current member of LA City Council, member of 9th District, has currently had corruption charges brought against him. For far too long, the long expense of these schemes and devious plans that cause cities, counties, and the state to lose money continuously fall on the backs of the taxpayers, and we are sick and tired of this. Using the numbers from the original project of $35.5 million, even if you factor inflation and use high-end products for building the locations, which we know you do not, because I have visited two of your locations, and they do not have high-end. If you factor all of that in, 400 square feet for that size would be only $20 million. Where's that additional 15.5 going? Back to the campaigns of the elected officials who authorized for you to be in this position in the first place. A study was released just last week showing that the state of California has received over $20 billion. Yes, billions with a B, $20 billion. And the homeless place, the homeless population has actually increased 9% in LA County alone. Throwing money at this problem isn't solving the problem, and building these so-called homeless housing projects isn't helping to remove them from the streets. So my questions are posed to both the Supervisor's Office and LA Regional and LACTA. Who ultimately decides which companies are allowed to conduct business with the County of Los Angeles? With all of this corruption, money laundering, and political bribery that takes place, why does the county choose to do businesses with companies and individuals that are not reputable? How is this information not factored into the application process for the $7 million grant? I do want to say, however, that Ms. Barker is our current supervisor for District 5 of Los Angeles County. And although she is running for reelection, voting her out of office is not going to solve this problem, because her opponent, Chris Holden, who has turned out for being assemblyman, he will push even harder and more ruthlessly for even more homeless housing projects upon our cities and communities, as he has already done in the cities of Claremont and Pasadena. So I want to personally thank Catherine Barker. She not only tabled this matter, but required public engagement with the National Corps. And I assure you, had it been any of the other four supervisors, they would not even consider doing so, and you would never have any input. Thank you.
Steve Daniels, Julie Salzar, and Steve Duquette.
That's a hard act to follow. Thank you, first. This is for Linda Jones. She wasn't able to be here. She wasn't able to be here today, so I'm reading this on her behalf. We requested any documentation done regarding property values going up or down. Do we have any documentation? Please give us that tonight. Nothing gives us the right to make a positive, or a possible negative impact on the, our legacy without any notification. My family chose this location in 1976 and moved into, into because we wanted to have a safe place for our small children, neighborhood to grow up in. We saw families grow, play outside, and feel safe. This is our refuge. This is our home. This project came at us, and I, yes, I did say at us. The decisions were made before we had a chance to respond. The way the project has been managed is demeaning and a terrible disrespectful. It's affected our lives monetarily and emotionally. Whoever made this decision without informing the stakeholders is not concerning the fact that our world has been terribly shaken. It has made a huge change in our world. The families that live here deserve respect. We have invested years and money in maintaining a safe neighborhood, and we are angry that it seemingly so suddenly. I have two questions. Do you have documentation on the property values? And how are you going to do to ensure physical safety of the elderly in building during the medical emergency or fire? How do you suggest a quick, efficient escape route for the elderly? How are you going to address the safety issues? Thank you.
Julie Salzar, Steve Duquette, and Cheyenne.
Good evening, and thank you, everyone. At least we have a forum this evening for everyone. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Thank you for our representatives. Thank you for the voices that I hear behind me, because there are a lot more of opposition in this, to this project, because we operate in this community sometimes on misinformation. And I want CORE to specifically and slowly address the situation with the people who keep saying the same things over and over and over again. This is not a homeless shelter. There are not going to be people urinating outside. This is an apartment complex for people 55 and older, so that means people over 10 years younger than I am. My husband is almost 80 years old. There is a bus stop in front of the 7-Eleven. There is a bus stop in front of the Arco Station, right across the street. My husband walks from our house over to those bus stops, takes his connection to Metro, takes the Metro to Santa Monica, and goes to work. He rides his bike. We walk. We've lived in this area over 40 years. I've worked in that complex. This is no threat to the school next door, as evidenced, as evidenced, as evidenced, as-
Excuse me, if we could just give the speakers some respect, please.
As evidenced by the other projects that CORE has put together. You have a 93% retention rate. That means people stay in these complexes. They don't leave. They don't wander. They don't cause issues. They're happy to have placement. They have support system. They have transportation, and the transportation needs to be addressed over and over and over. We have dial-a-ride. We have the bus. We have the metro system in the area. We have three hospitals. We have met, uh, health, dental, all kinds of agencies within that area. They're not going to be walking to these complexes. Just like all the other senior complexes in the city, we have more than ample ways to coordinate transportation to these areas. I took care of my mother for 22 years. I know we have services in the area. I took in homeless for over 30 years into my home personally. I know they need services. And I took, I took care of homeless women that were burned out of their homes, and there are no placement for them.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Steve Duquette. Next speaker is Steve Duquette, Cheyenne, and Michael.
Mr. Duquette, if we could please give each speaker the respect that they give you. So let's come on. I know we have a lot of feelings here about this, but we need to give our speakers some respect. So please, keep it down while these people are speaking. Thank you.
Steve Duquette, Cheyenne, and Michael Harrison.
Good evening. My name is Steve Duquette, and it's a good thing to see the city councils of Laverne and San Dimas come together, and the Supervisor to join as well. I think it falls upon me with respect to what we're doing is why do we have to be here at this point, given the natures of each cities? And let me give a little bit of a preamble, in that I know a lot about this. I've been a 45-year resident of Laverne. I have worked in the affordable housing area and many others for local government for 50 years. A major component of that was for the county of Los Angeles. So in other words, I know a lot about countyology. My last duty station was the Chief Executive Office. And on the recommendation of the Chief Executive Officer, once removed, I decided to go work for cities. Now, why would I do that? Well, it's obvious tonight why you do it. It's called transparency. There would not be this kind of uproar if there were meetings in the community about projects like this. And I cannot speak for San Dimas, but I can speak for Laverne. Laverne does this. There is openness. You know, the result is not always one I guess I would pick, but I'm not opposed to anything that goes that way, because the people have a chance to speak. I recently went through a process with the juvenile facilities on the north part of town, very much like this, in terms of how did this get to where we are? And I can do a little bit of forensic analyst work, because that's what I do, among other things. By the way, I'm doing six housing projects right now, three family, three senior. One of them is like this. But it's not on .6 acres. It's on four acres. It's not 40 units. It's 90. And I'm working with the city that I've been working with them on this for 15 years. And they're going to get exactly what they want in the right place and manage the right way. If this kind of project is managed well, it would be a good thing. I heard the comment about, "What about the neighbors?" Well, I imagine the neighbors don't realize a project like this of this height, not necessarily how they operate internally, would create an incurable defect with respect to their property, which is a detriment to value. They will lose a lot of money and equity, because this is here. It's a monster on Baseline Road, which in the evening is one of the busiest places you would go eastbound to go home. It's pretty reckless out there. So maybe the sheriff and the city of Laverne might look at that a little bit more carefully. So as I see this, I see that the scale here is out of place. It's too high, sticks out. If it was two fours, that might be different. And it's in the wrong place. Single-family residential in the wrong place. One last comment to Emilio of the county. You should make a meeting with Supervisor Barger for tomorrow and apologize with your words that I provided the final piece of funding. You did not. Funding is solely that of the Supervisors. They make the decisions, not you. I recommend against the project.
Cheyenne, Michael Harrison, and Mike Ebner.
Hello, Laverne and San Dimas. Hello, CORE. As a local resident of young children who shops in these neighborhoods and has a family business in downtown San Dimas, I'm greatly concerned that you are advertising this project as senior housing. If current and/or formerly homeless individuals will be occupying this building, will there be any accountability for the residents via drug testing and background checks? How can we ensure that the children next door at Montessori School will be protected? Have you considered the fact that residents next door to this proposed building will essentially be swallowed up by a four-story housing complex? I have many questions for you, but before I get to those, a project like this has its place, not in a neighborhood like this. It is against the demographic, and we can see that there is land all across America virtually, up in the hills, out by the desert. Like, there's endless land, but why are you choosing this piece of land? Is it of financial benefit to you? I'd like to know. I'm sure the people here would like to know. Some questions I have for you. Number one, how do you plan to keep the children safe? I'm sure many of you are parents. As a parent myself, as I'm sure almost everyone in this room has a parent or children they love, put yourselves in the shoes of parents who are sending their precious children to this school. How can you guarantee that these children will not be flashed, that these children will not be preyed upon? You can say, "Oh, it's not like that," but how can you guarantee it? Number two, if you were to build, if you were a local resident that would be right next door or across the street from this proposed building, would you be happy about this project? If you were right next door to this proposed building, would you be happy about this coming into your neighborhood? Number three, are you okay with the fact that there will be lawsuits filed against your corporations and companies because of the crime that will inevitably happen because of this demographic of individuals who will be in our community as our neighbors? It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when lawsuits come at you. Number four, how do you feel about destroying a small business, Olive's Market? A small business that is new and beloved in our city. What if that was your business? What if that was paying your bills? You know, you talk about having compassion for homeless people, and I want you to know I have compassion for them. But you know, we talk about walking a mile in someone's shoes. Walk a mile in our shoes and in the shoes of Olive's Market. And why are you putting current residents and taxpayers at jeopardy? And please define what kinds of seniors will be living in the building? What are their backgrounds? How do they qualify? We need to know.
Michael Harrison, Mike Ebner, and Leah Bangal.
Good evening, leaders. I'd like you to know, first of all, that you are being prayed for, that you may have wisdom, shrewdness, and the boldness to speak truth. My name is Michael Harrison. I'm a citizen of Laverne. My wife and I are proud homeowners for 26 years in the Fox Glen Housing Development. I oppose this project because it does not comply with the building and architectural codes of San Dimas and Laverne. Even an entity like the Water Company, building in the next block of Foothill, respects the design guidelines of the community and blends in, does not stand out. Unhoused adults, especially seniors, need to live near a transit hub, not a bus stop on a four-lane thruway that transports people from the San Fernando Valley clear to Chicago. Essential services are required. How, and this is my question, please note it, how are the proposed residents supposed to get to transportation safely? How are they supposed to get to a hospital for a checkup safely? How are they supposed to cross the street safely when they may be impaired, either by prescription medication or by disability?
Mike Ebner, Leah Bangal, and I apologize, Marcia Yaros. Yaros.
I just wanted to make one thing clear. The community is not... Want to make one thing clear. The community is not angry at the homeless. They're angry at the developer. You're the ones that plan to build, you're the ones that plan to build a monster-size, five-story homeless housing project inches away from a school. You're the one that shows contempt for San Dimas and its unique history and customs and standards and small-town values. You're the ones that when this project was dragged out of the shadows and into the light, this was your first publication you put out promoting the wonderful things about the project. It's on the San Dimas website. And you brag about how there's neighborhood compatibility, that it's compatible, you claim it's compatible to the existing surrounding community. Those are your words, and everybody knows that's not true. San Dimas, almost every home, almost every building in San Dimas, over 99% of the buildings are one-story or two-stories. You planned on building a five-story building that would tower over everything, even four-stories. It would make it the tallest building in town. And your setbacks don't come close to even our minimum standards. The front setback from the front of the building to the easement for the street, five feet. We can stretch our arms out longer than five feet. So here's the easement to Foothill Boulevard, Route 66, a really busy highway, and here's the building that goes straight up high into the sky. And the setback on the west side, just as bad, five feet, 11 inches, was your proposal. Anybody on an upper floor could open a window, spit, it would land on a school playground. So, and the tragedy is, we should be allies on this project. Everybody in this room wants to help the homeless get off the streets. But your idea to pack them and stack them and cram poor people into a high-density high-rise is a very old idea, a bad idea, and in a small town like San Dimas, it's a really dumb idea. So my one question, my one question is, will you join and sit down with the Mayor of San Dimas and the Mayor of Laverne, who know this community? Will you sit down and work with them to find a better, smarter, and safer place to help the homeless?
Leah Bangal, Marcia Yaros, and Jack Mircica. Mircica, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marcia Yaros, and I'm not trying to jump the line, but I don't see Leah coming forward. And I know we all want to move things along quickly. And...
I'm sorry, ma'am, can you state, you don't have to, but can you state your name for the record and speak closely?
Yes. I'm sorry. My name is Marcia Yaros, and I am a resident of District 5 in LA County for nearly 40 years, and I live in the neighboring community of Glendora. And I'm speaking out this evening about the need of every community to come together to find the right pathway to getting additional housing in our state. We're in the situation that we are in tonight, where so many people are angry, in part because no community has wanted to go first. And so I look to the Supervisor, the city councils, and the citizens to come together to find the right way to move this project appropriately forward. We all are sharing in the crisis of homelessness in our state and in our communities. And seniors are most likely to be on fixed incomes at a time of rising prices, as we all see. This development is expected to provide much-needed housing services and is intended to also benefit the local community with new sidewalks and parking and landscaping. I know that this is a minority viewpoint, but one of the things I love about our country is that everyone gets to speak their piece. Homelessness is a serious growing problem, and I believe all of LA County needs to pull together its support of good housing projects and find the right way to have every community participate and do its bit. Thank you very much.
Leah Bangal, are you in the audience? Leah? Okay, we'll set that aside and check at the end. Jack? And then Dennis Breton. And then our third speaker will be Amanda Gutierrez.
Okay, Jack Mircica. I've lived in San Dimas now for 42 years, and I just have some questions. And a lot of the questions I'm going to ask have already been brought out, but I haven't heard any answers, and I'm hoping to get some before the evening is over. First of all, the people that are being brought into the community, is there any guarantee or is there any kind of assurance that these people do not have mental incapacity, that they're mentally competent? We need to make sure that the people brought in are mentally competent. Not only that, but they are not alcohol, they are alcohol and drug addiction free. That's very, very important to the people in the community. And do they not have a criminal background? All right? Because if this were true, then you would not have to have them there for a long period of time. It should be only a safety net, a safety net where maybe they can be there for six months to get their feet on the road. I have a lot of compassion for the homeless, just like many of the others. I'm a devout Catholic, and I also support St. Vincent de Paul and the Foothill Family Shelter. So I'm concerned about homelessness. But we have to be also concerned about the community in which the homelessness is being placed. If you don't have any assurance that they are mentally competent, that they are alcohol and drug addiction free, and they have no criminal background. And if you're going to put the people in jeopardy here by not making that assurance, and things do happen, then of course you would have to be open up to a lawsuit. I don't want my tax money going forever to this. This is not supposed to be someone that just takes advantage of the system and has no intention of finding work, that could care... You know, there's an old saying, "You can't kiss a girl that's leaning away from you. You can't climb a fence that's leaning toward you, and you can't help someone that doesn't want to be helped." So we got to make sure that these people really want to be helped.
Dennis Breton, Amanda Gutierrez, and Houston Clement.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Breton, and I've lived in San Dimas for 48 years. Homelessness is not only a problem in San Dimas and Laverne, it's a problem throughout LA County, throughout the entire state, throughout the entire nation. I think it's a duty of all of us to participate, and all cities should participate in solving the problem. And this is mainly for the city council. I know most of you, I know the city managers, and you're all good people. And what you should do is find a place that's more appropriate, because I think most people don't approve of this. This is what I hear, being built where it's being built. Where is there a better place in San Dimas or Laverne to build a better place? That is your job to find out and tell the city manager and tell the supervisor for the county, "This is where we want it. But we should have a place in San Dimas or Laverne or both, because we should all be participating in the problem. We should all be solving the problem, but maybe this is not the right place, considering what the audience is saying." Thank you very much for your attention. Thank you Supervisor for paying attention. But remember, it's all our problem, not just the people next door. I remember last time someone said, "Build it in Pomona." They already have places in Pomona. Let's find the appropriate place, and let's take care of the problem. Thank you.
Amanda, Houston, and Rachel Barbosa.
Hello. My name is Amanda Gutierrez. I've lived here on and off my entire life, and my family has lived here over 50 years. I am, but thank you. I agree with a lot of the sentiments that have been proposed before. I think what you guys are doing is great. However, I think that you guys could choose a better location. I think that the city and CORE could work together to find a better place that would be more beneficial for those who live there, that would give them better opportunities, especially with transportation and job opportunities, things that would allow them to be more independent, including being able to walk freely to grocery stores, pharmacies, and anywhere else they need to go. Thank you.
Houston, Rachel, and Greg Oheva.
Hey, folks. Thanks for giving us this opportunity. I really appreciate it.
I really appreciate it. I was really a little bit disheartened to hear about the project, and mostly for the county folks here, pushing this housing crisis. When we're talking about homeless people, the LSA representative here knows this. This isn't a housing crisis. We've been pushing this for some time now. The truth is, it's a mental health and drug abuse problem. Take a look around. All these people, they'll vote for you if you build a hospital. Put a treatment program where these people can go. LSA will tell you, they know this. When, I've dealt with the transient homeless population directly and indirectly for over twenty years. And the biggest problem you have is they're benefit-resistant. They don't want the treatment. And we pretend that we keep building these projects. So where have we done this? We've done it in L.A. And how did that work for L.A.? It's a disaster in L.A. Where else have you done it? In San Francisco, and it's an absolute disaster in San Francisco. They're doing it in San Diego, and it's an absolute disaster. Because of our policies as Democrats that we have, we have a third of the entire nation's homeless population here, in one state. And you're using all these folks as your ATM machine, because all we do is pump money back into that system, and it's broken. I'm just wondering, when do you go home and go, you know, our project, our plans and our procedures and our policies, they're not working anymore? Change the policy. If this were a private industry, all of you folks would all be terminated. You'd have a new... I'm not being rude. I'm not, I'm, trust me, I'm on your team. I want the problem fixed too. I'm not being mean. I'm using it as an analogy, right? The truth is, is all we're doing is funding more money. The mayor of L.A. now wants 1.3 billion with a B to do what? And the only people getting rich are all these groups. Like, a lot of people are getting paid a lot of money for these projects, and it's inappropriate. Sooner or later, you have to go to the mirror and go, you know what? Maybe I'm not as noble as I want to be. Change my policies, let me listen to people, and start building some facilities and force these people into a facility. The ones that are benefit-resistant, the ones that say, hey, I don't want that treatment, now you can force a law and say, hey, listen, you're going to the treatment program or you're going into custody. Because don't forget, it was, it was Proposition Forty-seven that we called Safe Streets Now, which we all know is a lie. Come on now, let's be honest, that's a lie. And Proposition Fifty-seven brought them all out of the jail and put them all in our neighborhood. We all created this problem.
Rachel Barbosa, Greg Oheva, and Lily Brainerd.
Good evening Supervisor Barker, Mayor Bedar, and Mayor Hepburn, and of course, all the council members from San Dimas and Laverne. Thank you for being here. My name is Rachel Barbosa. I've lived in the San Gabriel Valley since I was a small child, when church friends took in my homeless mother and her four small children. We lived in their family room for almost a year, until my mother got back on her feet with government and church assistance. Thirteen years ago, my late husband and I moved to San Dimas. He worked thirty years for the L.A. County Sheriff's Department. And I worked for the Board of Supervisors, and most recently, I was a city manager for another city in the San Gabriel Valley. I live a few blocks away from the proposed project site. And I'm here today to express my support for this desperately needed housing development for the most vulnerable members in our community, our homeless seniors. The county has declared a state of emergency and is doing everything in their power to identify housing opportunities in every square inch of their jurisdiction, in all areas over the county, from Pomona to Long Beach to Palmdale-Lancaster to Malibu and so on. All eighty-eight cities in L.A. County must also do their part to support this massive countywide effort to provide a safe and resourceful environment for the unhoused. Neighboring cities are already doing their part, like Pomona, Clermont, and Glendora, who just purchased a $5 million facility to shelter and house homeless individuals. I assure you, the "not in my backyard" and hateful sentiments from today's meeting do not represent all of the members in our communities. I've heard from neighbors and fellow residents who aren't afraid of the housing development, they're afraid of the bullying and threats that an aggressive group is posting on their social media and yelling out to them in public spaces and the comforts of their neighborhoods.
Please, everybody, give her some respect, please.
What I hope comes from today is that both cities will unite on this one effort to identify spaces in our own cities to build similar supportive housing developments, and perhaps even a citizen-led joint task force that explores other ways our communities can support our leaders to identify more options to service and housing unhoused individuals in our region. As we've heard, this project is not in the jurisdiction of either of the cities that are hosting this meeting. It is allowed by right and is in the county area. So I ask that the project move forward on the next L.A. County agenda. Thank you.
Please, everybody, let's give some people respect here. Greg Oheva, Lily Brainerd, and the last card I have is Lisa Smith.
I'm Greg Oheva. I live in Laverne, and I wanted to tell everyone who's making these decisions that Laverne is no stranger to outside jurisdictions coming in and imposing their plans for our city. And so one example of that is Bracket Field Airport. And if anyone knows anything about the history of Laverne, the Bracket Field Airport was opposed by the people of Laverne in the nineteen forties, I believe. It was after World War II. And they didn't want it to bring that airport, they didn't want it to have, they didn't want that airport built in Laverne. And so ultimately, the county had their way. It was a long lawsuit, it was drawn out, it was like ten years. And by the end of it, the judge or whoever made the final decision ruled in the favor of the county. So we're no stranger to other people coming in and kind of like getting their way over what our wishes were. And so as far as what you're going to build here, my only thing is, is if we're up against an immovable object, the way I see it, isn't there some, some kind of way that we could get something on writing that would guarantee that this thing is not going to ruin, not ruin, but be a permanent thing? Because my main concern is, that unincorporated land, according to a map that I've seen from eighteen eighty-five, was really the original land of the city of Laverne. And so I don't know if any of you guys know this, but Laverne was, it's one city now, but it was originally two cities. One city was called Lorsburg, that's where the college is, like all that area around the college, which is now University of Laverne. And the land north of Foothill was a separate city called Laverne. So in nineteen seventeen, Laverne changed its, Lorsburg changed its name to Laverne, and that's what it is today. And so before they started, you know, annexing all of the land, the original town sites, started annexing the land all around their, all around their town sites and became what they are today, that land that this thing is proposed to be on is a part of the original Laverne. So I always thought that it was something that we kind of, in the back of our minds, people from both cities had future plans for that. We were going to one day get around to building something there that was complementary to our communities. And that's what I always envisioned the plan of that land was for. So for you guys to come in, I don't think anyone who lives in either city has a problem with you guys doing your thing there, but it's just that if we had some kind of a thing written down that you said, "We'll have this for fifteen years, twenty years, and then after that, we'll kind of relinquish it and let you guys have what you wanted to do with it." Make, and, you know, let us do what we want with it.
Thank you very much. Lily Brainerd and Lisa Smith.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Thank you for coming out. Mayor, you know we got your back, okay? We know you got our back too. So to the individuals who work for CORE, have all of you gone to that location? Walked it? Do you see the homes across the street? I live there. A lot of us live there. It's called the Fox-Glen area. A beautiful area. So I am here on behalf of the children, the children who don't have a voice to be here, because they're little. But guess what? There are five schools, five. There's an elementary school, Allen Avenue. There's a junior high, Ramona. There are three daycare centers, all in less than a mile. I'm never going to feel safe to have my grandchildren playing in the front of our lawn. I live in the corner. My husband and I have lived in Fox-Glen area for more than forty years. And guess what? We worked our butts off for it. We worked hard. Don't shove this down our throats. I understand about the homeless. I was a bus driver for Metro, and they lived in my bus. Okay, so I understand homeless. But you can't shove them in our faces. You know, our Fox-Glen area, our homes are close to a million-dollar value. Some are more. We worked hard. Don't do this to us. Don't do this to us. You wouldn't want us to do this to you. And don't go do this to another city. Don't go do this to any other city. You got to figure out a different way and think about the future, think about our children. And yes, you know, some of you said, "Be compassionate." Well, don't be compassionate to us, the residents here, us. We have a voice and we vote, and believe me, we are going to do everything to do whatever it is, to not have this here. Please, God bless us, and don't do this. Thank you.
Lisa Smith.
My name is Lily Brainerd. I'm a citizen of Laverne for nineteen years already. I can't believe that. I come from a communist country, okay? I used to live in this kind of house. I have design company more than ten years. I make very good money, I live in a box. And then my husband, you know, grew up Rose Garden, and then I come to city of Laverne, become a housewife. I love Laverne, I love San Dimas, because all belong Bonita School District. I always think San Dimas and Laverne is a big family. So when this, this project comes up, I couldn't believe my ear, you know? What, how much, how much it costs? It's pretty much like average single-house cost. My house is not even like this volume. It's unbelievable. I used to design this. I know how much it costs. But if we really have this budget for the single unit, I know this money is our taxpayers' money. My husband works so hard, I work so hard, we don't really benefit for anything. It's okay. We make more, we really like to help more people. I educate my son, you know, be more empathy. I remember my son, three years old, he got all his money, twenty dollars, to put in the red envelope. His daddy drove him to the Pasadena, give everybody what red envelope under the bridge. Okay, that's how my kids, they always get fundraised, get almost top five in the elementary school. So we always think we pay tax because we could help more people, right? So we're not the people who like are not in my backyard. It's just ridiculous. I couldn't imagine the highest building between these two cities. It's going to be a, whatever you call affordable housing or homeless, it doesn't matter, it's just a name. But I just don't want to see someday it will end up lost. I feel like everybody around this area will really, really fire up later if you have to build there, it will cause all kinds of loss. Think about if my house next to this building, I totally understand. I live in Old Town of Laverne. So why I support the people who oppose this project? I totally understand that situation, because I pick up my kids from Ramona and try, turn right, past the exact location. I couldn't think about, where is it? Is there any space there? Even smaller than my own land, my house, okay? So how could it possible in that area have a five-story, higher like the palm tree? I just couldn't imagine that. It's just too ridiculous. Please, take at least one day, sit there, okay? Stay there. Don't just design something on the paper. I was a designer. I know how things, you imagine something so good, but it's not reality. Please, stop this project. Not, it's the wrong place, wrong location. Thank you.
That's all for the cards that we have. If anybody else would like to get up and speak, just please state your name, if you could, please.
Hi, my name is Ari Morales. I'm a resident of Laverne. And this project represents a gross mismanagement of our taxpayer dollars, first of all. Second of all, it is a burden to the cities of San Dimas and Laverne. It's going to require additional resources from our police, our sheriffs, our fire station. I want to know how much is going to be given to our city to be able to support additional residents that are coming into our community that we are, that we are going to be required to service. A proposal for this development company is to meet with the council of San Dimas and Laverne and have not the county, but the cities approve the projects that are in our cities.
I'm Barbara Nichol. I'm president of the League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area, and I'm here with basically one or two messages. And that is, the League of Women Voters of the state of California, and the League of Women Voters of Los Angeles County, and the League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area, support this project. We support it because we need housing for the homeless in Laverne, as do all cities, as has been mentioned here. We need housing for the homeless in San Dimas, as has also been mentioned. And I hear a sort of a misunderstanding about who the homeless are, actually. The majority of homeless people are not alcoholics and drug addicts. The majority of homeless people are not...
Please, please let the speaker go ahead and speak. Come on, courtesy for everyone, please.
The majority of homeless, there are homeless who don't want housing, that's true. But I'm sure a person who doesn't want housing is not going to be coming here. Nobody's forcing anybody to go into any housing that they don't want to go into. That is a whole different problem. The primary reason for the lack of homelessness in California and all over the country is a lack of housing. That's actually the primary problem. A certain percent, a fairly high percentage, as you've heard, the growing percentage of elderly people are losing their housing for a whole variety of reasons, not the least of which, they're getting kicked out of the housing they have now, even though they've been paying their housing over a long period of time. And another growing area is families with children. I met a woman one time who was explaining how difficult it is to be unhoused. She and her husband both worked, they had two children, they were living in their car for circumstances beyond their control, and it was difficult just to get showers and bathed. It was so difficult, one of them had to quit their jobs so that they could live in their car. They did eventually find housing, but it took them a long time to get back on their feet. So this is permanent, this is permanent housing for people. And these people have a track record of maintaining the permanence of that housing. You want the homeless people in your communities to stay permanently housed.
Thank you for this moment. Mayor Tim, good to see you again. I'm kind of a double whammy here, because I'm a resident of San Dimas and a business owner in Laverne for Laverne Physical Therapy. I pretty much have my entire life on Foothill Boulevard. It's so amazing to hear the number of years that some of my neighbors have been here in this community, forty years, fifty years. I've been in this community for thirteen years. I know that number exactly, because that's the number of years my son's been around. We moved to San Dimas, we chose San Dimas, okay? Because of the Bonita Unified School District, how beautiful it is, how wonderful it is. A lot of your kids grew up here. A lot of your kids grew up here, went to college, made lives for themselves, some of them returned back to San Dimas. It's amazing to hear how many teachers actually went to the elementary school that they're now teaching at. That's the type of community that we live in, and that's the type of community that I chose. And I chose to open my business in Laverne because we love that Foothill Boulevard corridor. It's business, it's prosperity, it's a lot of great things. Thank you for everybody who was here and brought the numbers, especially to you, my lady with the purple, okay? Everybody here, I'm here in flip flops and shorts today because I cut my vacation short to be here because this is this important. To everybody here that has compassion for the homeless, and I believe that's everybody here, but for everybody who spoke, God bless you, okay? You're truly Christian people, but you're being, you're, the wool, the wool is being pulled over your eyes. These are not people for these people, these are dollar signs. We are looking at the homeless industrial complex here in our chamber. They are nothing but tax, just leeches to our tax dollars. And enough is enough. Billions and billions and billions of dollars is being wasted and things are getting worse. Lhasa, you're a failure. San Francisco is a failure. Laverne is going down the same path. This is not a temporary building. This is gonna be here forever and the money that they're gonna collect from this will be in perpetuity. Perpetuity. We will be looking at this forever and they will be collecting. And don't you for one second believe that this is gonna remain senior housing? Because as soon as the rules do not become convenient, they will change it and we will have all sorts of people living there, including an expansion.
Another hard act to follow. I'll say, my name's Jim Carey. I've lived in Laverne and San Dimas since nineteen eighty-five. We've got some really great speakers in this, in these two cities here. I'm, I'm looking at this with a little different perspective. And what we're really talking about is people get up here and say, well, the county owns this land and the county can do what they want. But what this really is, it's not a building, it's an island. And the county has this island that is surrounded by San Dimas and Laverne. And you can't get to that island without going through San Dimas and Laverne. So everybody that says you're coming, they're gonna be in their county. They can't get there without going through Laverne and San Dimas. Now you got this building, and I don't see the numbers here. I'm an engineer, I like to see numbers. You got forty-two units and you got, I think you said sixteen parking spaces. You got a manager with two, two bedrooms, that's two cars. They tell us there's gonna be service workers here, but they won't tell us how many service workers, and the service workers have to drive through Laverne and San Dimas to park their car at the facilities. Now you got all of these senior citizens in there, packed into one-room bedroom, one-bedroom apartments, and they obviously have families that are, come visit them. So they got no place to park here. You got a bunch of bicycles, but I'm not going in there on a bicycle to visit somebody. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go park my car at the 7-Eleven, or I'm gonna park it at the Arco, or I'm gonna go across Foothill to those nice people that live in Fox Glen, and I'm gonna park in front of their house on the Laverne streets. I'm gonna go behind that thing and park behind there on the Laverne streets. This is crazy. So the county can't take care of their own place. Now, on top of that, the first lady mentioned the, mentioned the extra load on the police and the fire, I mean the hos, the fire department with the ambulances and all that stuff. I don't see any provisions up there. If this is a senior citizen place, you need a bunch of space because every time somebody gets ill or falls down and a senior, a senior person, you got a fire truck, you've got a couple of ambulances, you've got police cars, coroners and everything else, and there's no space for any of that in this area. You gotta redesign it.
If I could remind all of you, please state your name, but if you've already spoken, we would leave it for other people that haven't. That would be you. Yeah, if you've spoken once, we've, we've gotta get to other things too. We wanna make sure everybody gets a chance to speak so we can go answer some of these questions. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jacob Pierce. I was born and raised here in the San Gabriel Valley. And I, I do have a question, but first I wanna acknowledge Catherine Barger for the, the outreach that she's done on this issue, the city councils for Laverne and Claremont here, who are here. But I also wanna acknowledge National Corps because you deserve some kudos too. I'm a field organizer for a housing advocacy nonprofit called Abundant Housing L.A. We wanna build more housing, protect tenants, fund affordable housing, and we do support this project. And I wanna give National Corps credit for engaging the community. I mean, it may not seem like it because there's a lot of, you know, ranker and a lot of tension in this room right now, but this really is a discussion that's happening where the city councils and our amazing county supervisor are saying, you know, we want you to listen to feedback, we wanna have a discussion, you know, we want you to engage with the community, and that's what National Corps has done. They've modified the project, they've reduced the size of it. Do I think it would have been a better project if it were bigger? Of course I do. You know, that's, that's the kind of bleeding heart I am, but I respect the fact that you're engaging with the community on this issue. So to my question, we heard a lot today about how people would, would prefer that instead of building housing, if we were, were putting money towards services. So my question is, which is more effective? Services for people who are unhoused or services for people who, who have a place to go, who have, have a roof over their head? So that's my question. And then the last thing I'll say and then I'll, I'll let the other folks go is that, you know, I know a lot of folks have said tonight that they do support homeless services and they do support permanent supportive housing, they feel like this isn't the right location. Honestly, if you feel that way, like, that's great, I'd love to talk to you because I support building permanent supportive housing and services in places all over L.A. County. And if you're interested in getting it done elsewhere, I have business cards, my email address is jake@abundanthousingla. So if you care about, if you care about building housing for homeless people in other places, I'd love to have that conversation. Thank you so much.
I'll remind you, if you've already spoken, it's only one time at the mic, we have other business to attend to, but thank you guys very much.
Good evening, thank you for having me, thank you for everybody coming out and being a great support to Laverne and San Dimas and all our counties and cities. I've spoken before, my name's Barbara Morales. And, you know, our founding fathers came here and they worked in stride, very hard to, to present a land, have the land opportunity to grow and provide for their families. I was always taught, don't hand them a fish, teach them how to fish. It also says in the Bible, if you do not work, you shall not eat. I have compassion, I work in the nursing industry, so we have to have compassion. I just presently, this last week, had three guys that were brought to us in cuffs from custody, trying to give them things, trying to help them with their drug and alcohol and mental health addictions. It is real, it is a problem. We do care, but this is not solving it. You're enabling people, you're handing them a building, here, live in this, we'll pay your rent, we'll give you your food, we'll supply your transportation. I am a single mother, raised three by myself, worked two, three jobs. Never once was my kids homeless because I was not lazy, I was taught by my parents to have work ethnicity. I was taught to strive and be the best that I can be. Handing and enabling somebody does not help them. I work with drug alcoholics all day long, mental health facilities, it's a revolving door, they come in, they go out. We have three guys missing right now and they don't even know where they're at, and they have very bad crime activity in the neighborhood somewhere. This is gonna bring chaos and destruction to our beautiful community and city here. We have families, we love them, we, we want to challenge these people, step up. I know people that have been in home and housing for twenty years and have never got a job, they don't wanna change. If you're handed everything, how are you supposed to go out and become a better person? You're saying the opportunity, oh, we're gonna help them, we're gonna, we're gonna help them, challenge them and grow. No, you're handing them everything. I don't mind supporting my military and I don't mind supporting my vets because that's a hundred percent that I'll do. But I would be damned, damned that I have to go work hard every day, every day, get up in the morning. I'm fifty-four years old, I've been working since fifteen years old. I will work because I can work and they can too. And I'm tired of supporting and funding everybody else with the excuses, it's excuses. You don't have to be homeless, you don't have to live a life like that, you don't have to be in bondage to drugs and alcohol. And Jesus Christ said, I came to come and set you free and free indeed. We are not slaves to this. We need to stop this and stop enabling them. Help them, but help them in the right way. Teach them to be better, teach them to go work, teach them to go to school, not sit there and be handed everything. We all here work, we've worked hard and we enjoy our money, we love our families, and that's why we are all here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, sir stepping up to the podium, could you wait one minute, please? Just one second.
Hi, my name is Laura Moon. I've lived in, born and raised in Glendora. And my husband, we relocated to Laverne ten years ago to be closer to our only grandchild. We relocated to the Fox Glen area so it would be a safe area for her to walk to school, we would be close and a safe area for me to walk in the, in the neighborhood. The Corps, I think you should be ashamed of yourselves presenting a PowerPoint that you are trying to sell as senior citizens into Hillcrest. You look at your pictures that you have on your PowerPoint. First of all, it's Pasadena City Hall that's displayed there. The welcome pictures were, welcome to senior housing. This is not senior housing, we know that, it's unhoused housing. Your pictures on your welcome screen showed a beautiful man and woman, seniors likely were gonna be living in a hotel. We know it's not gonna be that, we know it's for one person, one room. Why are you portraying something that it is not? We know that. The other thing is about the parking, I know it's been brought up, but I'm concerned, this is gonna be across from my front door. Am I gonna be safe to walk in the Fox Glen area without all the extra cars being parked? You have limited parking spot, you have many employees. City of Laverne, what is the parking regulations gonna be for the Fox Glen area? Is everything along Canyon View gonna be painted red so they can't, employees can't park there? What are you gonna do about a beautiful park that homeless now are lying in? And I'm having to call daily because I'm afraid to walk down Canyon View and Fox Glen. I don't wanna relocate to Glendora where my husband, the Moon family, started part of Glendora. We moved to Laverne because it's a safe community and we wanna keep it that way. Please do not make it something that you're not planning on doing. It's gonna look like St. Luke's in a few years, drive by St. Luke's Hospital in Pasadena, all fenced off, all graffiti, all broken, homeless or squatters in there. This is what it's gonna look like in twenty years. Think about the location, please. Do not put a postage stamp on this little pencil head because that's what you're doing. There's not ample parking, there's not gonna be safety measures, you're not gonna be able to keep these people out of the Fox Glen area. And who's gonna be calling the Sher, or Laverne Police Department every day? And City Hall, and Tim, and everybody else? It's gonna be me. Thank you.
My name is Terry Prentice and I'm from Laverne. And I think you get the sense that you don't have the support of the community for this And without that support, I don't think you'll be successful in it, except that if... What it seems like happened is that this was kinda sprung upon everybody in the late, late into the program of getting this thing approved and on it and it was going ahead and Supervisor Barger stopped the funding for it then, and thank you very much for that, Supervisor. But this is, most of the people here, ninety, ninety-five percent of us are concerned about homeless. We wanna solve homeless problems, we wanna deal with it effectively. We don't want a Band-Aid and we're tired of the state and the counties throwing money at the situation instead of solving the problem. Housing first, housing first has been tried and tried and tried and has been a failure, absolute failure. They are not addressing the core issues of homelessness. I listened to, attended a virtual meeting of the Major H Committee in, late last year. The money coming from Major H, something like six hundred plus million dollars a year. So in four years, they have spent over two billion dollars. Homelessness did not go down, it increased by something like twenty to twenty-three percent. And now we're telling you, we spend another six or seven hundred million dollars and it's gone up another nine percent. That tells you what we've been doing is not working and this is not working. It's gonna be an eyesore in that neighborhood, it's an, it's gonna be an albatross in the community. We need to start addressing core problems, not just throwing money away.
My name is Pat, my name is Patrick Jones and I reside in San Dimas. Been here twenty-five years. I grew up in Claremont, and so if you add that all together, it's sixty-six years that I've been in this area. I, I've, my whole life, there's been homeless people in this area. We call them hobos, we call them a lot of different things. Most of the hobos that I met as a, as a child and I did because we used to hang around by the train stations, were by choice. They chose that life. And I've been in, in and out of law enforcement for a long time. I'm not an expert on homelessness, but a majority of the people that are homeless in the area are not homeless because they don't have a place to live, they're homeless because they don't wanna follow any rules. And, and our life is about rules. And I know that you're not gonna fix our, our homeless problem because if you build this, we are still gonna have the homeless that we have today. Because that's not the people that are gonna go in this, in this facility. The other thing is, is that you have forty-two rooms. And once you fill those forty-two rooms, what happens if there is somebody from San Dimas or Laverne that needs a house? Well, it's already been filled by somebody else from within the county. So this isn't a fix and, and we all talk about homeless and whether, whether, whatever spectrum you're on, what you picture in your mind about what is homeless is not what's going, well, I, I, a majority of people think when they're talking about homeless, they're talking about the people that are on the side of the road, living in a tent, by the freeway, on the overpasses, that's what they're thinking about as homeless. Those people don't want to follow any rules. They don't wanna pay taxes, they don't wanna be off of their drugs and alcohol and whatever. Because anytime you go into any type of program, that's a requirement. Because anytime you go into any type of program, that's a requirement. So we're not fixing homelessness with this. There is, there is, and, and my understanding is when it was first proposed was it was, it was gonna be homeless and then it got changed to senior. And the concern is, has been voiced, is if you can change it that quickly, it can change back. The state of California, a few years ago, there was a place called Lattnerman's. They closed it.
Thank you, Patrick.
Are we set for three minutes?
Three minutes.
All right. Are we having some fun now?
Yes, sir.
Let's look at the area of this building. That's about roughly the size that they want to build a five-story. That is exactly about it, give or take about 10 or 12 yards. They want to put a five-story building, they want to put a five-story building right around this space. How are you gonna do that? Ah, it's gonna be pretty cool. All right? Now, we know why they want to build it. All right? We absolutely know why. We need to figure out how to move it. Because we know that that picture is not gonna fit in this area. It isn't. Again, let's look around. All right? Since this all began, I have now roughly over 5,000 voters just in Laverne and San Dimas that are against this. And that base continues to rise. They are unhappy. Hacienda Heights has a similar issue. Over 4,000 voters and that continues to rise. An issue in Clermont and their voters are calling me and they will continue to rise. So it seems to me that just needs to be a change in a certain area in order for this to stop. And that's when we vote. And in 2024, we will vote and we will make changes. We will make so many changes. And when people think that you have the ability to do something and say something, it may not happen because those people that you think helped you before won't be there to help you again. We will make changes in 2024. Oh, so many changes. Get ready, folks. It's gonna be a bumpy ride. Barger! Love your office. Love Vicki. Love you, baby. What I hope, Barger, I get it right, I'll get it right. No, no, no bets. What I hope for this particular building is that your supervisors, hopefully in unison, vote against it.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. All right, I see no one that's coming lining up, so this is gonna be your last golden opportunity. If you haven't spoken and you want to step up to the microphone, this is gonna be it. And then we're gonna, and I see a lady moving forward. And then we're gonna move on to ask some questions of the staff and the National Corps, questions that have come up during this exchange. And so anybody that wants to speak, needs to step up behind this young lady because the last person in line is real quick. But if you've, if you've already spoken, don't, don't, don't stand up. Ma'am? Anybody that's already spoken won't be able to speak again, please.
All right, let me make sure this thing is on and you guys can hear me. I do not live in Laverne or San Dimas. I'm your neighbor from Glendora and we had a similar project built, but it was called the Avalon. It's high-rise building. It's expensive, it's ugly, it separates South Glendora from North Glendora as far, as far as the view goes. So it's not exactly a person's experiencing homeless issue, it's a humongous building issue that doesn't fit in the neighborhood. Also, my mom spent the last 24 years of her life working on Skid Row for the Union Rescue Mission, so I know a lot about homelessness. So I don't need anyone to confront me later and say, "I don't know what I'm talking about." But I do know a lot about homelessness and the experiences that they have. It's part of our life. And so that's not really the issue. It's placement, it's the building. And I think for the people who live across the street, it's a matter of property value. So I don't know, like, are you guys gonna appraise their homes before this is built? And then appraise them after they're built and see what the difference is in their, um, cost of their home, the value? Cause their value, I don't know if it's gonna go down. Big buildings sometimes do that. So I think in all fairness, are these people gonna be compensated for having their property value go down because of the big building? So with all the compassion in the world in my heart for those experiencing homelessness and being part of that community and advocating for them, because I do, and you can all look at me and think, "Oh, no, she's full of it." I'm not. My mom dedicated her life to that. However, this is not proper placement. It's a small property in a residential neighborhood and we just don't know the long-term effect it's going to have on the overall neighborhood. Plus, I waited a long time for Olive's to open and I love it! And it's, yes, it's enriched, it's enriched the community abundantly. It's a thriving personal business, private ownership of a small business. And don't we support small businesses? And they make the best cup of coffee around. And I think, I see people walking over there and visiting and they're coming up with their strollers and their dogs. And it's enriched their lives in the community. I have to drive over, but I still do and park and get my coffee and whatever. But it's enriched the community and I don't understand why we're gonna tear down something positive that people got made, got a loan and built up for something that's gonna maybe not make such a good impact on the community as far as placement goes. Thank you very much.
I'm Cynthia Tyner from Laverne. And my question is very simple. Are you creating an opportunity for assistance? Are you creating an opportunity for complete dependence so you continue to get your income?
Hello, my name is Pat Hassan and I am a local member of the community, live in San Dimas. Um, just wanted to touch on a, a few points, a couple of points rather. Um, you know, I'm an engineer and when I look at this picture, um, it's just, to me, it doesn't scale well. I mean, it's, it's not an efficient use of taxpayer dollars in my opinion. So, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, in, in terms of what I would want to do is find a, a big plot of land and build a, you know, build something that is not going to basically, you know, negatively affect other, other people's property values. I'm not sure why we're not doing things like that, right? We, you know, I see 41 units here, 42 units. So, um, you know, the other thing that briefly, um, and I don't, I just read an article, so I'm probably not the most informed about this, but, um, I think what angers the, angered me and angered the community was, uh, I want to speak a little bit about the process. So, you know, when we're, when we're designing a product, you know, one of the first things we do is we, we do market survey and the voice of the customer. You know, what, what does the customer want? And so I, I guess I'm challenging the core organization who has really, you know, they've got these high-minded ideals, but did they actually do a, a market survey to indicate, you know, what communities within LA County want these developments? Maybe there are some communities that, that really, that really support and they want these developments in their communities. I would, I would venture to guess that, you know, San Dimas/Laverne is probably, you know, 90 to 95%, you know, opposed to this particular, uh, project based on the, you know, the applause and so forth. So, um, I think going back to that process, um, I think that it, it doesn't instill a lot of confidence in the core organization that if they're, um, you know, reading this article, it was, I was kind of insulted, I guess in a way where it was like, um, reading it, it was basically saying, "Well, we gotta throw up our hands because, you know, the, the law says that they can do this." It's like, it, to me, it was, it just seemed very kind of weasely the way it was done where they, they get this small sliver of land between the communities. And, you know, if something's legal, that doesn't make it always right. So I just wanted to kind of highlight the fact that, to me, it, it just felt kind of insulting that you guys didn't come to the communities first and say, "Is this something that you want?" To me, my conclusion then is that, okay, there's a money motive. It's just, it's just a money, the motivation is money. It's not really about, uh, helping the, the homeless. So, um, you know, I, I think, and I'm gonna leave you with a thought experiment. This thing could cause more homeless people than, than it, it solves, right? All the Fox Glen people, they may lose their nest eggs, all their values. They're most likely gonna go down. And a lot of elderly people that have worked their whole lives, they're gonna lose it.
Hello, my name is Ralph Shalafow. I have, we've lived in the Fox Glen tract for 58 years. As of June 25th was 20, or 58 years. We talk about affordable housing. That's, that's what you're selling. Fox Glen 58 years ago was affordable housing for two young teachers. This project does not fit into the neighborhood. So that's pretty simple. I do have two questions. One, the communities are really making an effort to do their petitions. Does the petition matter? Do we need to have a number? And that's a question that needs to be addressed because if it's a number that we have to hit, these people will hit that number. The second question I have is being in Fox Glen on Canyon View, we have a easement by the water company behind our houses. How will that street be protected? There's oak trees behind that, that's the water district. How is that gonna be protected when the people in this facility get bored because they live in a little cube and they're going out and exploring? So those are my two questions, but an observation, I ride bicycles every week. This is unsafe. Plain and simple. We drove down Foothill, we, we, we go down Foothill every week. Right in front of this is a steep hill. There is no room for a bicyclist to come down that hill without being in harm's way. You have to go on the curb, which is against the law. So for anybody to say that this is gonna be a facility that doesn't have cars and they're gonna be on bicycles, totally inappropriate. This rendering, I know it's not real for our project, those trees and that street, there is no room for a bicyclist. So, and to address, you're there. The lady that was here earlier is saying that she's gonna protect the kids from Fox Glen. I was the seven-year-old kid that played in Fox Glen and we need to protect Fox Glen.
Hello, my name is Ryan S., first, uh, longtime listener, first-time caller. I just have a couple of questions. Um, you mentioned, of course, you're doing everything up, you're doing from development, you're doing everything, at least seems concerned. I'm curious, what do you have as far as readiness concerned? I mean, I just, I think I speak for everyone else here is we do not want, as happy as we are to try to help the homeless as much as we can, I think I speak for the rest of us when I say, "We don't want a Megan's Law in in our community." Second question is, what are your intentions in case someone gets kicked out? Are they gonna go to another facility or are just gonna be left out in the cold? Are they gonna wander around the area till they, till they, till they get let back in? Um, that's smiling questions. Thanks very much.
Okay, it looks like that's gonna be the last question. So we're gonna take a 10-minute break before we start, uh, shooting, uh, questions that you've asked towards the, uh, National Corps people and the, uh, other, uh, folks that are here to help answer these questions. So a 10-minute break, then we're gonna start it right on time because it's already starting to get late. It's 9:04, so at 9:14, we're gonna start. Kim, Kim? Mr. Heffburn? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you, folks, for sticking around. Uh, I think that break was needed on many, many fronts. I'll turn it back over to Chris.
Thank you for sticking it out. We're, uh, now looking at three hours of a meeting and, uh, this is a short council meeting normally for us. So you're welcome to join our council meetings that go six to eight hours with the deliberation we have. It's very robust. Um, so what, we're gonna make a slight change given the time and the hour and try to streamline and make this a little more efficient. I think I've captured all the questions plus the additions of other staff. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna run through one question at a time and pose it to the panel, any of the four entities or cities, if that's more appropriate. Get answers and clarity, or the county, yes. And when we get to the end, I'll make one more call if there's a question that somebody asked that we did not ask, to have you come up and only speak to that one question. It's not intended for you to do another three minutes. It's intended to say, "Hey, what's the cost per unit? That's the question I asked and you didn't ask it." And so that's, and then once we're done with this, uh, question and answer, we'll then go to the city council and the county to have their final comments and questions and then we will wrap up the meeting and hopefully be home in time for cartoons. I don't know, something. So thank you. And, and please bear with me while I sit down since we're gonna go through these. My face isn't that beautiful to look at by me standing. What is the current budget per unit for the new structure of 43 units?
Um, in response to the question, what is the cost of the development is approximately $33 million. Uh, that's a little over $700,000. We understand the cost of affordable housing. It is expensive to build affordable housing in California. That is something with, uh, with what we grapple with across the state of California. Uh, there's many factors that go into that cost. Uh, one of them is, is that we pay prevailing wages, uh, making sure that people on the job site, uh, earn, earn a living wage. Um, also, a lot of the stuff that everyone is grappling with, with supply costs, increased interest rates, uh, supply shortages, um, but, but that is a question.
It could be general relief, it could be social security. Generally speaking, for seniors, it's social security is the main source of income.
I think the tenor of the question he asked was, what is the per-person cost that I'm paying? So seven and nine in this unit, is it one individual or do you divide it amongst more than one?
It's, it's the income for the entire household. So it's, the entire household income is counted, and for a one-bedroom unit, it could be up to two people in a one-bedroom.
Okay, so you would divide that in half roughly, if you wanted to average it across one unit with two individuals? Okay. What are disabled people going to do if the one elevator fails?
So when our sites are opening, we go through an emergency plan. And so this is done prior to us leasing up the property by our risk management department. And so that emergency plan comes up with those what-if scenarios. And so in a case where there's only one elevator, we do, all of our properties have two-stair cases on either sides of the building, and then also, we are working with our director of accessibility to look into installing wheelchair lifts and things of that sort. But in case an elevator does go out, there are stairs where they, where residents can exit, and then also, again, our director of accessibility is looking into wheelchair lifts and things of that sort. But again, there is an emergency plan put on-site, and also throughout the property, there are signs where it goes over emergency exits for each resident to, to be able to access at any time.
And understand that some of the questions raised by, by the residents are, have a differing tenor. So would you let your children or preschool child attend school having to pass this location and see impacts such as urination, et cetera?
So, so one thing I want to say is, thank you, guys, for coming out. We have definitely been listening to everything, every comment made. And so one thing I would like to put out there is that, that we manage these sites as of today, which a lot of you guys know, and I heard someone actually has been to our sites. And so I say that because some of the comments made, I just want to kind of dispel some myths. So in permanent supportive housing, there are rules put into place that my team enforces. And so it's not a free-for-all. It's not, you can just hang outside and, you know, and do whatever you want. That's not the case. And so we have wraparound services. We work hand-in-hand with our amazing service team to make sure that the residents are following the rules. And so I just wanted to really go over how the property is run, because, just to provide more context, that there are rules put into place, and even when it comes to background screening and things of that sort, we do screen for background. If you are on the sex offenders list, you will be disqualified. We use a software that does a nation, a nationwide database search. And so if you have a felony, if you've, you know, committed bodily harm against another person, you will be denied. If you have a felony due to, you know, selling drugs or anything of that sort, you will be denied. And so I urge everyone, you know, I think that a lot of people believe that just everyone can move in, and that's not the case. There are rules. We do provide background checks. And so I hope that answered the question, just when it comes to children and things of that sort. We will be managing this property.
The next question is similar, but the one component of it is specific to, why would you select a location next to a school?
So, so, so yes, we look for a number of amenities when, when it comes to site selections, access to schools, pharmacies, medical clinics, grocery stores, public transportation. Again, we, we try to follow a lot of the housing priorities that the county has laid out in multiple different sources, following the Housing First model, you know, focusing, not de-concentrating housing in areas that are low-income. And so we do look for these amenities. We actually have a number of housing sites adjacent to schools. For us, it's, it's, we do want to place housing next to amenities, and for us, it's, it's, these are the amenities that we look for. Most of our, all of our housing is going to be in proximity to schools, medical, pharmacies, and these are amenities that look, that we look for when we place housing. When it comes to permanent supportive housing units, we actually have, it's, we actually integrate this population with large families. We've done this in the city of Inglewood off a metro line, and it is ninety-five units. Fifty of those are permanent supportive housing, and the other fifty, approximately fifty units are for families, and they're living in the same community with these children.
Next question is, how big is the service planning area, and how far are the boundaries of such area? Is it something in the order of five-mile radius from a center point?
Sorry, can you hear me? Okay. Service planning areas vary in size. The service planning area three essentially is the San Gabriel Valley, Pasadena, out to Pomona. In terms of how the coordinated entry system prioritizes folks, as I said earlier, the prioritization criteria, we draw folks, especially for project-based buildings like this, we look for folks who are enrolled in services, either in interim housing, or outreach, or other programs that are serving folks who are unsheltered or sheltered in the area, prioritizing folks from the area first, and then expanding as needed if we're not able to find folks who meet eligibility criteria at the micro level. Due to federal laws regarding fair housing, we are not able to draw a specific boundary and say beyond that, you are not eligible for a resource, because it would be in violation of the law. We do prioritize locally first and, and expand beyond that.
Just to clarify, locally, you mean SB three, or the expanded is all the SB areas?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
So if you're looking at residents within SB three, you're looking at geographically closest to the project, and if there are not sufficient individuals in the pipeline, how far out do you go? Do you pierce the boundary of SBA three to go into the other areas?
For a building with forty-one people, we would never even get close to that.
Does the sidewalk go all the way down the block, or just in front of the property? The sidewalk?
So, so right now, in front of our property, there's no sidewalk. There is no sidewalk in front of the Montessori School. Our development would, we would improve, add sidewalk, not, not only in front, but we would work with regional planning as well as Caltrans to improve that, making sure that we have ADA access for our residents to get, get to that bus stop.
Are you able to squeeze the size of this project on this small site and be able to contain residents there?
Can you repeat that question?
Are you able to squeeze the size of this project on this small half-acre parcel and be able to contain residents there? I think they're referring to the individuals that are there, not necessarily having the secondary effect of going out into the community neighborhoods and parks.
I think, I think the first part of the question is, are we able to squeeze this project on the small size of the property? Is that the question? I think the answer is yes. I think at the beginning, we started at five stories. We're fifty-four, we're now at four stories, forty-three units, to the point of squeezing individuals in. You know, the, there are minimum unit sizes that we have to comply to. That's all driven by the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee. That's where we get our largest source of funding. And I don't know off the top of my head, but there are minimum-sized requirements. I think it's four hundred and fifty square feet approximately. So these aren't micro units. It's all kind of driven by state codes and regulations. And we are also providing lots of outdoor common area space, over three thousand square feet. That was part of our site plan that we showed last community meeting, as well as interior community space. I want to say it's over two thousand square feet. That will serve as flex space, multipurpose room, case management offices, things for resident engagement. So there's plenty of space, indoor, interior and outdoor space as well.
So I think this also addresses, where is your compassion housing people in a small area? I think you're referring to both the unit, as well as all the other amenities the property has, correct?
I think, I think that response spoke to that, correct? I think.
Where is the additional fifteen million dollars going that is above the twenty million dollars that this project should cost, now that it's smaller?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question, Chris?
I think the presumption is, now that it was reduced, that this project is now a twenty-million-dollar project, so since the original budget was around thirty-five million, what's going to happen to the extra fifteen million that was originally budgeted?
So again, we can't answer, so, so I guess that's hard to understand, so it's just automatically saying that this should cost twenty million. Again, our total development cost that we said earlier is thirty-three million dollars, so I'm not sure how to answer that question, because those numbers aren't.
I think that's the answer. The project cost is thirty-three million, not twenty, and there is not this fifteen million dollar available for something else. Who decides which companies conduct business with the county? This is businesses, I think, related to the project. Yes, and the second question, I think, is related to the first. Why does the county do business with non-repugal individuals? I think this was an individual that was referencing cases in previous situations related to members of National Corps.
In, in this particular instance, it was a response to a notice of funding availability. So we basically put it out there to any nonprofit or for-profit developers who met the criteria of the funding, right? So, and they, and when you go through the scoring process, you've got to hit all of those benchmarks, and that's really what determines who gets the funding.
So in terms of the follow-on question, how is this factored into the seven-million-dollar grant? The previous two statements or questions would not relate to that. It would be the criteria that's in the NOFA that determines eligibility, correct, for that seven-million-dollar loan? Do we have any docs, documents on property values going up or down due to this project, and are you willing to provide them? So there are several studies that look at impact on local property values after affordable housing is developed, and all of those show there's no negative impact, and actually some show that there's actually an increase. And what we would tell you, what we tell you anecdotally is, many of our projects, once they're built, what we actually see is that the standards are improved in the neighborhood, and we see local businesses and others, this is a fact, improving their properties because of the quality of those properties. I, I would invite any of you to come and visit any of our properties anytime and see the quality of them.
If we could please, let the, let the speaker speak, please. We had your time at the podium. Let them speak, too, please. Let's be nice to our guests. Thank you.
One of the, one of the residents asked me after the last community meeting for that data. I sent that to her afterwards. I'd be glad to share it with any of you. There's plenty of research out there, so if you want to question the research, that's fine. I'd be glad to share it with you, though.
Yeah, you can provide it to the city, and we'll make sure we post it on our website so that everybody can access it. So thank you.
We'd be happy to. What are you doing to ensure physical security for elderly, as well as proper escape routes during an emergency?
So just from the services end, we work with all the residents and provide education throughout their, their time at our buildings. We walk through the maps that are provided by property management. They're originally gone over at LISA, but we reinforce it throughout the year. We have evacuation plans. We work through creating a community. So we have activities that really create that neighborhood watch. Just like all of you are gathered here today, watching out for each other. The same thing occurs in a micro level in our communities. They watch out for each other, watch for people that shouldn't be there. That is their community, their home, and there's value to that. There's value to each of those residents that are residing there.
And so just to add to that, I know I touched on it earlier, just, and AJ, thank you, with the emergency plans, when it comes to an additional set of security, most of our sites do have guards that, standing guard after hours, and also, we do have staff that stays on-site. So just wanted to add that to it.
Thank you. The next question, I think, is related to the city, but I think it goes to the county. Will the city look at the traffic impacts here?
So, so the short answer is, it's not required, but we are going to initiate our own traffic study, because even beyond this project, I've heard there's some concerns with the need for possibly a signal coming out of the housing right across the street. So we're going to be doing a traffic study, but it is not required. We are going to do it on our own.
Thank you, Catherine. Will there be accountability drug tests for residents that are there? I think this goes to the selection criteria for residents.
So no, just like you or I in our, our own home, our own rental unit, we would not be drug tested. These individuals have a lease. They abide by the community rules, like Courtney stated. So if they do get violated within the community rules, of course, this will be addressed. Evictions do take place. That is not something that we shy against if it's necessary to keep the community safe. But we do try to pair it with, between Courtney's team and my team, we work together in tandem to ensure retention. And sometimes, like Courtney said earlier, the better option might be going to detox. The better option might be going to care for their needs in that moment, so we are supporting those pathways for them if that's needed. But no, we don't go into people's homes. We respect people's privacy, but if something violates community standards and rules, of course, we will address it. On the case management side, for intensive services, those things are discussed. An individual's service plan is comprised of different areas of the person's life, and those things will be addressed, just like you or I. If we have an area that we want to lose weight, we want to save money, we work through those things with each person and their unique needs and their own story. We know some people have a really easy time losing weight. Other people, you know, can, you know, take, do everything they can, diet, whatever, and they don't lose weight. Same thing with substance use, mental health needs. Sometimes it takes a little bit of a journey to get there. But intensive case management helps in all those categories and helps people be more successful. But it is paired directly with Courtney's team.
Thank you.
So, is it okay to answer out of line?
Yeah, but let's keep that to a minimum. Let's, we've got to keep the meeting going, so we've already established questions, but yes or no.
Okay, thank you. So, and AJ alluded to it actually earlier. So when we do have to evict a resident, we work hand-in-hand with the service provider to transition them to interim housing. And so I know one of the concerns were, when you guys evict them, do you just... That is not something that we shy against if it's necessary to keep the community safe. But we do try to pair it with, between Courtney's team and my team, we work together in tandem to ensure retention. And sometimes, like Courtney said earlier, the better option might be going to detox. The better option might be going to care for their needs in that moment. So, we are supporting those pathways for them if that's needed. But no, we don't go into people's homes. We respect people's privacy. But if something violates community standards and rules, of course, we will address it. On the case management side, for intensive services, those things are discussed. An individual's service plan is comprised of different areas of the person's life, and those things will be addressed, just like you or I. If we have an area that we want to lose weight, we want to save money, we work through those things with each person and their unique needs and their own story. We know some people have a really easy time losing weight. Other people, you know, can, you know, do everything they can, diet, whatever, and they don't lose weight. Same thing with substance use, mental health needs. Sometimes it takes a little bit of a journey to get there. But intensive case management helps in all those categories and helps people be more successful. But it is paired directly with Courtney's team.
Thank you.
So, is it okay to answer out of line?
Yeah, but let's keep that to a minimum. Let's, we've got to keep the meeting going. So, we've already established questions, but yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. So, and AJ alluded to it actually earlier. So, when we do have to evict a resident, we work hand in hand with the service provider to transition them to interim housing. And so, I know one of the concerns were, when you guys evict them, do you just throw them back out onto the streets? No. So, we work, you know, it's a lot of meetings, it's, you know, a lot of collaboration, but we are able to transfer them into interim housing to where they're able to get more help, to where, you know, maybe it wasn't the right time for them to be in permanent housing, but they will be built back up to get back into permanent housing.
Thank you. There are some duplicative questions now, and one that's a legal question that is not appropriate for answering in a public venue. But specifically, how do you feel impacting Olive Market, a small market that's currently on the site?
So, our understanding with, when we entered into contract, Olive's wasn't there. You know, my understanding is Olive's has been there, I think, less than eight months. Our also understanding with the property owner is, they're aware, they were notified, they're aware that this development was going to be for affordable housing. And so, our understanding with the owner is, they're aware that this was short term, and they were aware that affordable housing was going to be proposed here.
How are proposed residents supposed to get to transportation safely, to a hospital safely, to cross the street safely, when they are impaired by either medications or a disability?
That's a great question. So, again, you have an intensive case management team on site, a residential service coordinator dedicated to providing services on site. That means coordination to appointments, working with Uber Health Transport, VA Transport, Axis Transport through MTS, really working across the spectrum, across different resources to help people get to the appointments that they need. And it's not always easy, but we do sometimes get grants that help cover costs for Uber rides or taxi rides and things like that. So, with Hope Through Housing Foundation, we actually continue to apply to grants as we see need. So, if we see an immediate need for providing transportation, maybe an increased budget for things like Uber rides, we can work towards that. We can adapt to the needs that actually present themselves.
Thank you. Will you join a sit-down with mayors of the two cities and work to find a better, smarter, and safer place for this project?
No, we'd be excited to sit down with both mayors and look for opportunities for affordable housing in your cities. We'd love to learn about the affordable housing done in your city and how we could work together to bring more of that.
Yeah, if I interpreted it correctly, just to make clear, no, but we're more than open to work with you on additional affordable housing options throughout the cities, correct?
No, no, we are, I'm saying, we're willing to work with both cities on affordable housing, locating sites within your cities, exploring options, and working together. We'd be happy to do that.
Including this. Including this project, so are we saying you're open to work with the cities to potentially relocate this to a different location within our jurisdiction?
I think we're happy to discuss that opportunity.
Thank you. Is there a guarantee, is there any guarantee or assurance that these residents are mentally competent and that they are alcohol and drug addiction free or have a criminal, or do not have a criminal background?
So, I think Courtney addressed the part where there's screenings, they have to go through a process. It's not easy getting into a PSH, you know, I'll be honest. I sometimes wish it was easier in some cases, but the sense is, the person has to fill out a VSAD or assessment form to even get into coordinated entry. From coordinated entry, then they have to meet the matrix criteria for the specific property, the specific unit, the income requirements, anything else associated to that unit. Once they're matched, they then have to go through the process of filling out income documentation, everything with Courtney's team. So, no, there's a lot of hoops to go through. To deem someone mentally competent is definitely not our role. Our role is to provide folks that apply and meet the criteria and abide by their tenancy regulations, and that's our role. I mean, Courtney, do you want to add anything else?
In this, in terms, the next question, when do you go home and realize, I'm sorry, I have to frame it as it was presented by one of the speakers. When do you go home and realize the project plan and procedures are not working, do you change the policy in pushing this project forward? I think this would relate to, do you evaluate this and reconsider based on the input whether or not this is a good development for this location and the way it's fit? And do you reconsider that approach and policy moving forward?
So, I'm going to try to answer that. I would say when we, you know, again, we, we are, County of Los Angeles has issued a list of priorities. We're happy to discuss, but we're trying to work on development sites that, you know, meet the county priorities and trying to solve the homeless crisis of, you know, over seventy thousand individuals.
The next question, I think, relates to, will somebody who resides in this housing unit become a permanent resident here? So, is there something we can get in writing that this project will not be a permanent housing site? I think it's specific to, once a resident goes in, are they never leaving?
Correct. This is called permanent supportive housing, meaning that once a person moves in, they're able to stay there as long as they comply with the lease. This is not a transitional facility. This is, it's about stability. This is permanent supportive housing, so nobody has to move out.
I think it may also be relate, could this project go from senior housing back to all age?
No, so we have land use regulatory agreements. This will be fifty-five plus individuals who are formerly homeless or who have experienced homelessness. This would be in regulatory agreements, not only with the state, with LA CDA, and so it would not be able to change the population. For fifty-five years is our regulation.
And I'm understanding is the loan is fifty-seven years. Is that just construction for the first two years, and then the affordability covenant's fifty-five?
Correct. Construction could take it out for fifty-seven.
Okay, thank you. Have all of you at National Corps walked the site and surrounding areas known as the Fox Glen area?
Yes.
How much is being given to our cities to support the impact and service that this population will have on those communities?
So, any development will be subject to local development impact fees. So, that's your police, fire, schools. And I guess, in regards to your question, again, this development is located in the County of Los Angeles. And so, development impact fees get paid to the County of Los Angeles.
So, all the, any financial implications relate to the county since it's not a local city property? What is more effective, services for unhoused or services for the housed?
So, I've been doing this twenty years, and I started off doing outreach on Skid Row, like the one individual that came up here and said her mother did street outreach. And I've helped people from the street. I've helped people in housing, and I truly wholeheartedly feel housing is health. Housing is a space where you can address your medical needs, your mental health needs. You have a safe place to store your medication. You have a place to address wound care. You have a place to have hygiene. You have a privacy. You have dignity to have your own space, a quiet space to just decompress, to be sick, to recover. So, I honestly feel the more expedited route to recovering from homelessness is truly housing. I've seen on the streets, working within healthcare for a period of time, that folks get their medications stolen repeatedly, up to three times, and having to go file a police report just to get diabetic or hypertension medication replaced. It hinders progress of their own healthcare. Honestly, housing is the best gift to someone and the best space of stability, a pillar of support to provide care and wraparound services.
The next one has some duplication from previous. So, this is a previously unhoused project focused on fifty-five plus-year-old seniors. What, what part this may go to the city of Laverne? What are the parking regulations in the Fox Glen area that would be considered or contemplated after this project is implemented?
So, throughout Laverne, there are nighttime restrictions on overnight parking. What a community can do if there is an impact from a high-density development or some other issue is petition for further parking restrictions, so it'd be a resident-only permit. So, that's within our code, and it's within a lot of other city codes, too. So, more so what we'd look at, again, is traffic flow. We would build upon the county traffic study. That's going to be very important to this. But it would be those parking permits, the resident permit parking, that would probably be the best approach to any incursion of extra cars into the neighborhoods.
And the next question is duplicating, basically, what's the city going to do with any secondary impacts that come from this project? And I think it relates to evaluating and responding to that. The next question is duplicate value. Are you creating an opportunity for assistance or complete dependence for the residents of the project?
I would say there's an opportunity for assistance. I mean, I think people go through different stages when they move into their unit. Someone brought up a really good point about isolation. We often see that within the first three to six months. It's a new space, it's, you know, new surroundings, new neighbors, just like any of us moving into a new home, a new unit, getting to know your neighbors, getting to know what things you have around your space. But we really adapt the services to what's needed. So, if we find that folks love salsa or love tango, we'll bring that on-site to help people community build and find something that brings them joy and helps them stay connected to services. For case management, looking at things that allow for that space of engagement. I know an example project I have in my head, you know, there's one individual that avoided us for like three months. We knock on the door, we leave a note, we were persisting. The one thing that the guy really loved was coffee and donuts. So, we started coffee talk, and it was a simple way to get him downstairs, to connect, to have his coffee, to have his favorite donut, and it was a gateway to getting services. It was a gateway to making friends and connection, that social connectivity helped with the isolation and helped bridge to services. So, it's the little things. It's the mindfulness, just like any other human being would need in their daily life. So, yes, connected.
Thank you. Did you do a market survey to determine what the community wants in this, or if they want this type of project?
A market survey done for what the community wants, no. We follow, we, what we followed is the County of Los Angeles housing priorities. Again, there's seventy thousand homelessness. They have a scoring rubric and a criteria which we follow.
The way I heard it is, at least when I heard, the question was outreach, and you did not do outreach. So, when they talk marketing, I hear that, stop saying the county. One of the requirements is to do outreach, and that was not done. So, I just, you keep throwing out the county's requirement. The requirement that our office has for any housing development that goes in is community outreach. And Corps, I've already talked to your president, acknowledged that it was not done. I just want to set the record straight on that.
Does the resident's petition opposing this project matter?
Yeah, I just want to respond to that and say, we fully acknowledge that we should have started the outreach earlier. So, I want everyone to hear that. We should have started that outreach earlier, but that is. That is the reason why we're here now, though, is to listen, and why we've had several community meetings, and we're happy to listen, and we're trying to collect that feedback now, but we acknowledge we should have started that sooner. So, I want you to hear that.
Does the, does the petition opposing this project matter?
Let's let them speak, please. Please.
The petition does not have an impact for us as a developer, no.
How will the water, there was a reference to the Water District and a street within the Fox Glen. So, how will the Water District Street and Fox Glen be protected, which I think it relates to the impacts that potentially come from this development?
So, I think when the question was posed, it was, you know, if the residents, if they got bored, would they go and, you know, vandalize or, yeah, damage anything? And so, it just goes back to one of my previous statements, is we will definitely be imposing rules. And so, we'll have community meetings, things of that sort. You guys are more than welcome to come to the community meetings with the residents, but we will have patrol, things of that sort. So, in a nutshell, we will be monitoring anything, and if anything does come up damaged, you can always bring it up to management.
Let me clarify that. In terms of the enforcement, the rules, the ensuring, the elimination of any nuisances that occur on the property, you're talking about on the property site, not necessarily residents that maybe created a nuisance off that site, correct?
Well, when things occur off-site, we actually, and on our other projects, we do have our neighbors around the area. If something does come up, whether it's our residents, whether it's not our residents, they do bring it to our attention. And if it's within our power, we do help, you know, escalate, because we, any community we go into, we have a great working relationship with local PD, our city officials. And so, even if it's not our residents, even if it, you know, happens to be one of our residents, if it's not on-site, we do what we can, because at the end of the day, we are a community. Hope that answers the question.
Yeah, I think, if I heard the concern correctly, it was, if I'm in one of the units and I'm combated by all the rules, I'm not allowed, I can't evict somebody who has fallen the rules, making the payments and whatnot. If I'm engaging in criminal behavior off the property that you have no nexus of control, that is not something that you have that is actionable. So, if I create an encampment in the Fox Glen neighborhood on the Water Property, that's an issue between that property owner and law enforcement. It does not have a nexus to something you can do, correct?
So, if it's our resident, we can speak to them about it.
Is it actionable?
I'm sorry?
Is it actionable? So, if they're conducting that behavior regularly, can you evict or take some punitive action on them?
If it becomes a nuisance, if it violates a law, then yes, we can evict.
Okay. And this one, I didn't understand the question. This was from Mr. Ryan S. What do you have, what do you have readiness concerns was one question? And then the second question was, where are residents getting picked up from this property when they're picked up?
Can you repeat that?
The second question is, where are residents picked up when somebody's picking them up from the property? The first question, I don't really have clarity on. The question was, what do you have, what, is something related to readiness concern?
So, can you clarify? I'm just not sure I understand the question.
How do you triage who is being placed in this facility? When it comes in contact and then what you do, I mean, to get it into this facility?
Okay. So, as was mentioned, there are a number of hoops. Some of them are related to the homelessness system, some are related directly to the building in terms of their screening criteria, including criminal background checks. From, from the coordinated entry system perspective, as I mentioned earlier, we draw the pool of folks that are matched to units based on folks being enrolled in programs that are serving the local area. We prioritize folks who have their documents in order, because we want to make sure that folks can move in quickly and meet the eligibility criteria. So, there is what's referred to as the coordinated entry assessment, which is a tool that helps us better understand whether folks will need services ongoing or not. And based on that, we create these pools of eligible individuals. We specifically, as I mentioned, have made amendments to the prioritization that allows us to have increased focus on the local jurisdiction. And we've also expanded the pool so that we're not just placing the most vulnerable so that we don't end up creating buildings that are all super high acuity folks, folks with really intensive needs. We have a mixed, a mixed community in these buildings, but all folks who need assistance.
So, we're coming to the end of the question, so I'm now going over a secondary list. That's a lot of duplication. So, there should be a few questions. What are the potential jobs for residents living at this facility?
So, I think it's a variety. Like you or I, we have different skill sets. We have different interests, and we have different abilities. So, I think it's, you know, someone mentioned Starbucks is not being an option. I think that being a great option. Starbucks has great benefits. I think even stock options, things like that. I think even stock options, things like that. It's really what meets their needs. I don't think I can dictate what all residents in the building want, but we do offer linkage to job coaching, resume building, connections to opportunities within our training programs. I don't know, Greg, do you want to add a little bit more to that?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I just, sure, I mean, these are seniors again and they have life experiences and, and job, you know, experience as well. So we play off of that, you know? Like, so we have case managers that work with them individually. We also have a program we call Core Academy, which is actually a workforce development training program that can allow them even to work in property management. So it depends on what their interest is that we would connect them with appropriate jobs.
And the last question relates to parking and it appears that you are not properly evaluating the need for parking. What are you doing to ensure that there's adequate parking that doesn't have an impact on the community?
Hi, everyone. My name is Amy Bodak and I'm the Director of Regional Planning. You heard from my associate, David DeGrazia. I sent him home because he's getting the sniffles, so I didn't want to sit next to him frankly anymore. The question is related to parking and I want to go back to rules. And unfortunately, there are rules that all cities and the county must comply with and this property and this project has to comply with those rules. And the rules are that these types of projects do not require the amount of parking that you or I or most people would think would be required in this location or in any other general location that's not in downtown LA. That is a fact, but this property is providing 16 parking spaces. I believe they are mostly voluntary parking spaces and it exceeds the number of parking spaces that the rules require them to have. So we were talking about rule following a lot today and they are following the rules. I understand that a lot of you don't like the rules and my opinion is, is irrelevant here, but we have to follow the rules that are given to us by the state. The county has to follow those rules and the cities have to follow these rules. So even if this project were in a city, whether it's Pomona or the Antelope Valley or Laverne, they would still have to follow the same rules. And so in this case, they are providing 16 parking spaces.
Thank you. That was the last question. And so what we're going to do now is I will turn it over back to the mayors to do the closing and closing questions that the council would have and then we will adjourn the meeting.
At this time, I'd like to turn the mic over to Supervisor Barker for any last statements or any questions that he may have.
I, I do have one statement that I just want to get a clarification on because there's been some confusion about how this is funded. The county's funding stream is a NOFA, the seven million that you asked for. Where's, how is the breakdown on funding coming to your project? Because people think it's county. I want you to clarify that, please. Take the seven million off the table. Where's the rest of the money coming from?
Sure. So the capital stack of the development, the county funding, but it comes from permanent, regular construction and permanent financing as well as tax credits. That, that is a capital stack of financing. Permanent loan, construction loan, LACDA in our, in our tax credit equity.
The LACDA is the seven million, the NOFA? No?
Well, it's 6.3. It's based off of per unit. And so with a reduced unit count of 43, we'd be at 6.3.
Okay. I just want to make that clarification because this project's being compared to the one in Hacienda Heights. They're two different projects. That one is a project Home Key. This is a by right. And so I just want to clarify that. But in closing, because I know it's getting late for you all, I want to thank you all for coming out. Please know that your voice is heard both pro and con because I agree 100% with the individual that talked about the fact that housing alone is not going to get us out of this. So my ask of you is, when I'm fighting to build a mental health facility and getting pushed back, I hope you all are going to show up and use your voice to support me so that we have beds available for those that are not going to qualify for this type of housing. Because I will tell you that it is very tough when you are one of five and you don't have the backing. So what I saw here tonight is there's a will. Now we've got to figure out the way to build that side of the equation, which includes rebuilding a facility downtown to address those that are incarcerated that are not eligible for detention, which is a whole nother issue, but that's our jail. So I'm going to be calling on each and every one of you, not personally, but I kind of know who I can call on to get the word out, to help me get the word out that while this project is moving forward, wherever it is going to be, and I appreciate the willingness to sit down with the City of San Dimas and Laverne, but I also want you to sit down with me because I think that the three of us would be, it'd be worthwhile. But having said that, on the other one, mental health addiction, I'm going to be knocking on your doors, asking for you all to use your voice to support me to get the state and the federal government to allow us to build facilities to address those people. So thank you.
Will you be notifying us when you will be meeting with Core and the three? Will you let the public, let us know as residents, County Supervisor?
I'm an open book, yes. Oh. Of course, but it's not going to be a public meeting like this. I think that we're going to get a lot done, but absolutely, I mean, Vicki, in my office, our office is open every day except for Saturday and Sunday. And we are, I'm all about transparency, which is why I made the comment about lack of outreach. Because quite frankly, had they not applied for NOFA to the county, we probably wouldn't have, we would have found out about the project when you all found out about the project. What did you just ask? So the petition is, and, and I appreciate what Amy said because it's not a popular thing to hear, but I'm going to say it again. This is a by right project, which means that so long as they, they comply with basic building codes, because of the state, and I'll, I'll give you the legislation number. It is AB 2162, permanent supportive housing, the California Public Resources Code, which is a CEQA exemption, and the state density bonus law, all done at the state level, have taken away local control. And that means from the county and from the cities. And so I love your petitions and I promise you, we try to respond to every single person that writes into our office, but in something like this, this is not going to come before the Board of Supervisors. That's why I corrected my new best friend about the fact that there is nothing to vote on right now at the board. There is nothing. It's, this is, this is a by right state project.
They actually did answer that question, but yes, they did.
Can I just, I'd, I'd like to respond to that directly. I actually put my kids in a school next to a development like this and, and they were incredibly safe. There were never any issues. So yes, I would choose, I did choose.
All right. At this time, I'm going to turn the mic over to Mayor Heffron, who's going to ask each one of his council members to, to make either a statement or they may have a question within it, but we're going to combine that so that we don't have two separate times coming back to questions. So it'll be a question, answer type closing statement from each of the council members. Here's Mayor Heffron.
Like Emmett said, that's what we're going to do. Councilmember Lau.
Thank you. So I don't have a question necessarily, but I would like to address both the concerns that the residents have raised and the way in which, in which we have come to this place. And so I can say with wholehearted, you know, from the bottom of my heart, that I believe in providing the services necessary to help people get out of homelessness. I appreciate that. And I appreciate you taking the time to talk about the services that you provide and what you can do to help make lives better, not just for the people that would benefit from the supportive housing, but hopefully for our communities in general, because the more people that are off the streets, the better for all of us. However, having said that, I would then urge you, because there's no necessarily going back in time, right? None of us have a time machine to redo what has been done. However, I hope that you are taking this away as a lesson learned, that you are supposed to be the experts in this area. You have said to us that you have built numerous projects, that you are familiar with the concerns that get raised. I am certain that these aren't, you know, that this isn't novel to you, that these aren't the same questions and concerns that you've heard from other communities and other places where these places have been built. And so I think failing to address that at the forefront leads to a lot of the misinformation that happens and trying to turn back the clock on that or trying to correct that after the fact doesn't build credibility with anybody, quite frankly, right? And, and once trust is lost, it is really hard to regain. And so I think that, you know, there are going to be people who are skeptical of what you are doing. There are going to be, continue to be people who question. So as a lesson learned, I think if you really care about the people that you want to put into this supportive housing, as I believe, or I'd like to believe that you do, then think about what it must be like for those people to have to move into a community that feels this way, right? Like if they are looking for a way to build that community and rebuild their lives, putting them into an environment where people have misconceptions about them or already fear them is not good for them. So if you say you are doing what you are doing to benefit these people, then I urge you to make your actions match your words. And to Supervisor Barker's point, the outreach should have happened on the forefront. And again, there is no time machine that any of us can get into. Trust me, I'm sure we'd all like to, to be able to do that at some point, right? But that's not going to happen. So what I would urge is, you've already expressed that you would be willing to sit down with both cities and the county to think about a way forward that addresses the concerns and moves forward in a way that is helpful or as helpful as possible to all concerned. And that means both the people that would be serviced by this project, but also the residents that it affects who already live in that neighborhood. So again, if you say that you are for these people and that you are for correcting the homeless issue, then I need you to think about that the next time you go into a community. How are you engaging the people that live there already? How are you educating? Because you're not helping if you're not doing that on the forefront. This is really difficult. And I think, you know, you've seen the emotions, not just from tonight, but from prior meetings. And I'm not saying it could be avoided because you're not going to change every heart or every mind, but you're doing a disservice by not thinking about that on the forefront. So I am hopeful that I will be hearing soon about when this joint meeting will take place and I'm hopeful for fruitful discussions and compassion, as was discussed by many people here, for everyone concerned, because it is late and we are all here and most of these people don't get paid to be here. So, you know, think about that. So I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate the services you've discussed and I think let's try to do better for next time and I look forward to working with y'all to make this something that can be workable.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Councilmember Michelle Cash of Aldean. Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you. Thank you all for being here today. Thank you National Corp for stepping up and being here in front of our good citizens. You had mentioned 5,009, 5,009 people are actually homeless in Area 3, which covers San Gabriel Valley. We are putting less than 1%, spending $33 million on less than 1%, 42 people to be put right here in our good city of Laverne or San Dimas, where the person said earlier, where this was Lordsburg and this now is Laverne. Makes me kind of wonder if this land really belongs to Laverne. Sorry, San Dimas, love you guys. But you know what? I chose to live in Laverne. I was growing up, the kids in Laverne. I've worked in Los Angeles for over 24 years in law enforcement and I have worked in areas of Skid Row and I can tell you exactly what happens when that community comes to our area here in, in Laverne or San Dimas. I chose to live here, you chose to live here and you chose to have me represent you. Not all of you, but the most of you and that's what counts. Here I am. It is what it is. But what this sounds like to me, it sounds like it's more of a transitional housing or rehabilitation center, not an area for our seniors. And you know what I'm going to ask, and I ask our great county, you know, if we can get that $7 million grant to the City of Laverne, I'll even share with the City of San Dimas, so we can give those seniors that are teetering on the, on the, right there on the line of homelessness, an opportunity to get out of it because I've knocked on your doors and I know how much you get on social security and I know how much it hurts for you every single time and you're a veteran and your VA disability doesn't even cover your mortgage or your rent. You know, I'd like to help that person out so I don't have them added to the 5,009 that are in our San Gabriel Valley of 15 cities. America, we are strong. And you had mentioned that you do whatever it takes to keep people housed. I will do whatever it takes to support my community and here in the City of Laverne and of course, right neighbor of the City of San Dimas. And I don't want to push this to anybody else to have it their problem. I just want you guys to know that I stand by you. America's strong.
Thank you, Cash. Councilmember Steve Johnson.
I just want to say, I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated by our lack of local control over projects like this. And I understand that this is a county area, so Laverne, neither Laverne nor San Dimas has jurisdiction, but it's very, very frustrating. But even within our own city limits, we get these by right projects where we have no control in denying it or different things that we used to have control over. It, it's just very frustrating. Lastly, Catherine, thank you for being here. I appreciate your attendance tonight. To hear what Laverne residents are thinking about projects like this and San Dimas residents, I just have to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Couple of questions. Los Angeles County Development Authority, when did Core apply for this, for this particular grant? For the development? When you went through the process...
It was in November of last year.
November of 2022? Or 21?
22.
22. But it was stated on the property by Core that Olive's Market was not aware of this eight months previous to that. So how does this all, how does this all gel out? Core said that it was eight months, Olive's didn't know about that there was going to be, that they were only a temporary location for Olive's Market, but yet you said that eight months, this was before, eight months before Olive's Market was even there. Is that correct?
So let me clarify, I think what we said, when we entered into contract, Olive's Market was not there. I think we said, what I said was, I believe what I said was, I don't believe Olive's Market has been there more than eight months today.
When, when did you want to purchase the property? What was the date that you purchased the property at Olive's Market? Was it November also?
We, we haven't purchased the property.
But you're in purchase right now.
We, we have a contract. Purchase and sale in agreement.
When, when did you become in contract?
That's a tricky question because there's, there's...
Not tricky, it's just a question.
Well, no, it's a private party and I can't give kind of contract details.
Just give me a date. When were you in contract? When did you even discuss contract?
It's a PSA approximately. Approximately a year ago. We'd have to kind of pull that specific detail.
So you're telling me right now, as the mayor of my community for the last three years plus, that you were discussing contract for a by right proposal in our residential neighborhood between San Dimas and Laverne for over a year without even con... neighborhood between San Dimas and Laverne for over a year without even contacting one of our elected officials, our city managers? And then you come and tell us that you engaged us in May of this year? What is, how does that work? And I'm just marrying what my council said. You need to engage with these communities when you're going to put, and mind you, I'm all about, I'm on the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. As a matter of fact, I'm the president. We have the San Gabriel Regional Housing Trust. We have housing for the unhoused. We have tiny homes that we've supported that did it the right way. You guys need, when you come into our communities, develop something that's going to affect the lives of hundreds and hundreds of people. You need to come and engage with us first. As County Supervisor Varga said, no, 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 no. This was you guys. You did not engage. You did not come to our community. You did not gauge the residents. You didn't even tell us about this until it was on the docket of a council meeting of the supervisors to approve your $7 million funding. And until we got a call, and our county supervisor's staff said, we told them, you guys need to pull this because we know nothing about it. So I guess back to the original, as Councilmember Lau said, shame on you. Shame on you for not coming and telling us what's going on when it affects the lives of our community. That is my district in Laverne. And I'll be darned if you're going to come in here without a fight from our community. Do you think 5,000 signatures is some? You wait and see how many signatures you can get. This isn't the first thing that's happened in our community where we fought. We're a small little town, but you know what? We call, we're tiny but mighty. So at the end of the day, you guys need to sit down with us. And my suggestion would be, let Olive's buy that property. You come back to the drawing board between the two cities and find another place for this development. Because I'll tell you what. I was, I was elected in this, this position, along with our council, to protect our residents in our city. And I'll be darned if you guys are going to come in and do this, because you know what? We're a very generous community. You just come and talk to us both, and we'll figure out something for these unhoused people or these 55 and older. We have seven mobile home communities in this, in our city of Laverne. I know the city of San Dimas has one. That, we carry a lot of veterans and, and people that are still on the brink of, of losing their homes. But the point is, you messed up. You didn't come and talk to us first. Give it back to Olive's. Let's find another place for you guys. Thank you.
I think we know they're in the house. I'm, I'm going to take this time to go ahead and recognize, uh, Councilman, uh, Nacoll. Eric, you have something you'd like to say?
I wanted to thank the community for coming out. The hour is late, but your voices are strong. And so thank you for expressing your opinions, sharing your thoughts, and providing input to all of us. All of us up here listen very carefully to what you had to say, and we hope that we can move forward and find a solution. I want to also recognize the supervisor. Thank you for coming out and, of course, spending time with us this evening, as well as my colleagues on the Laverne and San Dimas city councils. To the staff that came up from National Corps and from other county and offices, thank you very much for listening to the community, for engaging. And my ask is that you continue to listen to them, that you engage with them, and you open up additional sessions for them to express their views. These are their homes. What you are proposing will have an impact on them. And so my ask is that you continue to engage with them and work with them to find a path forward. Lastly, I want to acknowledge the Laverne police, as well as our sheriffs, for keeping us safe tonight, for staying late. We acknowledge your service, and thank you again for keeping us safe and for staying late as we conduct democracy here in the city of San Dimas. Thank you.
It is late, and because it is so late, I'm not going to build a soapbox, it's too high. Uh, I do have a couple of questions that I think are very pertinent. Um, and that starts with, um, in light of this particular site, what we've discovered through this whole process is that it's incredibly inappropriate for a project of this scope and size on such a tiny piece of land. And, uh, I'm kind of curious what other project sites, potential project sites were considered for this particular, uh, housing, uh, project? Because I think from what we've gathered in the community and from people speaking tonight, is that no other sites were considered. It was a postage stamp of land that was available, and it was something that you guys could do, so it shall be done. And I think that's the prevailing thought, and that's why people are so vehemently against the project, because it's, you know, like I said, so inadequate for a project of this scope and size. As we were talking about, uh, rules, do the rules that people would have to abide by include a no crime clause? I know some low income or affordable housing include no crime clauses, that if somebody is convicted of a crime, whether it's onsite or offsite, whether their lease is terminated or they're in breach of their lease. And as we were speaking about rules, uh, rules for parking came up, and, uh, how the rules don't require additional parking. So, um, I'm a little confused by that. Yes, the rules, my, my impression was that they don't require additional parking, but do those rules preclude additional parking if it is needed and deemed necessary and a part of the project? Uh, and the developers want to add more. And, uh, you know, to touch on, I, I'll, I guess we'll loop back to those questions at the, the very end, but, um, as somebody said, um, about engaging the community and figuring out what customers want. And, uh, I think in light of everything that we know, uh, we aren't the customer, and that's the sad truth. We're the ones that pay for it, but we're not the customer. The customer is the person that's going to be residing inside of this facility. So when National Corps, uh, specs out a project, they're not necessarily focused intently on what you or I or the community may want. They're focused on what the resident may want, which isn't a bad thing, but I do fully agree with everybody else that spoke up here that the, uh, the outreach at the outset of this project was, uh, not sufficient. And, uh, I, I do think, like I said at the very beginning, that that led to a lot of misconceptions and understandings about this particular project. I'm very, uh, pleased to hear that there would be at least some hearing out of San Dimas and Laverne, uh, for potential alternatives to this site, because I, uh, like many people have said tonight, I'm absolutely in favor of addressing homelessness. I'm excited that, uh, that somebody's willing to do it. However, this is clearly not the place to do it. So, um, if at some point we could address those questions, thank you again, National Corps for coming out, uh, all of the elected officials that are here tonight, and thank you to the community as well.
Mayor, mayors, and members of the council, and Supervisor Varga, uh, yeah, the answer to that question is you're correct. Uh, while we're not able to ask for parking, there is a provision that they can provide it. And so in this case, they did provide 16 spaces. It is up to them to determine whether or not they feel that that's adequate for, uh, the constituents that they're going to serve and the access to transportation that they have. Similarly, um, for those that were at previous meetings, you may have noticed that there had been a redesign. Um, and as you city council members know, um, in a buy right project like this, particularly, um, with our hands tied, uh, we're not able to ask for improvements to those projects. Uh, however, I will say that just like they did provide the 16 spaces, there were a number of changes that were made to the project based on input that they received and, and understanding of some of the community concerns that they had. Uh, but specifically to answer your question, uh, if it, if it suits them, they could provide
And then from my end regarding the crime, um, as Courtney mentioned, if it's in violation of their lease, um, and it is criminal activity, um, HUD does have some, you know, very clear set standards, manufacturing, distribution of methamphetamine, um, and other list of items that could, um, immediately call for eviction. Um, for, uh, a lot of our sites, I would say most of them, we do crime-free programs. So we work with PD. We create and cultivate a community of watching out for each other. Um, and that does change the dynamic, because people value their space. They value their peace and quiet in their homes. And to have crime-free set up, it creates that, that unity, just like in this room. There's a lot of unity, same concept in the building. Um, but yeah, anything that would impact the safety of the building, um, wellbeing of the community in the sense of safety, um, crime, those are addressed by property management, violation would be served, and so forth.
I, I guess, uh, speaking to, I, I, I would agree with you that if somebody's committing crimes on the property, that's probably something that would trigger, uh, a clause in their lease and probably terminate their lease. If they were convicted of a crime outside of, uh, the facility, is that something that still would trigger a, uh, a clause in the lease and terminate their residency?
I believe, and I would have to confirm with property management to be 100% sure, but if it does violate the terms of the criteria of entry, meaning, let's say someone does become a sex offender, um, they would in fact then have their, their lease terminated, if I'm, if I'm understanding it correctly. But we would confirm with our, our PM and legal.
Okay.
And I'm not the property management person services, so.
You know, I think, uh, being a sex offender would certainly, uh, trigger a lot of people in the room, let alone a, a termination of a lease contract. So I really certainly hope that would. Um, but, but, you know, a lot of the things that were brought up tonight were quality of life issues, like, uh, you know, somebody were, at the facility were to be convicted of a vandalism of a car across the street. If that were to happen, uh, would that be something that would trigger the termination of the lease?
I think I'll just echo what Courtney stated earlier. I mean, we work with all of our neighboring communities. I know at other sites, if things come up with teenagers, because we know teenagers can be very active sometimes, um, those issues are brought up to property management. They work with the community, they address the issues. Sometimes it's working with the family unit. Sometimes it's working with the community partners, um, whether it's onsite or offsite. You know, we value the surrounding area. Um, so I've seen Courtney's team do a multitude of different coordination and working with families and, and situations like that. So I would say that would be echoed here as well.
Uh, and then, I don't know if somebody wanted to touch on the, whether any additional locations were considered for this particular project?
On the note of sites, uh, that comment, uh, we, this is not, this is definitely not the only project in pre-development that we're working on. We work every day to look for other opportunities that could fit financing, uh, that comes out at all levels, at local, state, federal as well, in all regions, all counties, up and down the state of California. Um, so we definitely have other projects, uh, that we are, continue to work on, and we do look for alter, uh, sites like this, um, that continue to fit into the, uh, scoring, the goals of the, the different entities from the, where these dollars come from. So there.
I completely believe that you are continually looking for more sites. Uh, what I'm specifically referencing is whether there were any alternative sites that were considered for this particular project? Or was it a, this look, piece of land is available, so we're going to build it?
Yeah, I, so I think you kind of answered that question. Um, there wasn't a specific target or focus on this. It, it is, it is a real estate development project. Real estate is hard. Affordable housing is difficult. It's like threading a needle. You got to align your sources, um, you got to address the cost. Um, so part of it, at the crux of it, is like you mentioned, you got to have a, a willing seller to work with. And, uh, there's economics involved. Um, you know, we got to come to terms, and, uh, like, you know, folks said, National Corps has a, uh, has got the air, very good reputation, and so part of that is with the business community, the brokers, the sellers out there, and fulfilling and seeing our
I appreciate that. Um, and, uh, that's all the questions that I have. I appreciate you answering them. Um, thank you again for the community for coming out, but as other people have said, statewide, we vote for this. So, um, we, we need to do better, I think, in the future. So that's all. Thank you.
Councilman Vienna?
You know, it's funny, at my, my day job, you, um, for you guys, for National Corps, um, the county has something called these car meetings. And one time, um, you know, when Anna was, uh, Justice Deputy and this guy named Joseph Charny, uh, was, uh, Justice Deputy for Zevius Lawski, I sat there looking like members of Family Feud contestants with my employer, trying to answer questions of a panel. They just kept getting thrown at you. And so I very much empathize and commend you for sitting through this, uh, and getting through and getting the answers out that need to be gotten out for the community, because it's important that they know. That being said, um, I find it highly offensive as the representative for the fourth district in San Dimas, where this place is, that I've literally never met any one of you. And I've attended all of your community meetings, your virtual one. I attended, uh, your last one here. And, and I've also been very vocal, um, in educating the community. And so when I hear you say that you guys engage your, your community, it's just, it's hard to believe into the points that were raised by my colleagues here, and I'm, Cash, and Wendy, you guys are very motivating speakers, by the way. I appreciate your fortitude. Um, but it, it is very concerning to me, because I want to believe that you're going to do this work. My, my brother-in-law's homeless, um, I've dealt with that with my wife, and it's a very challenging thing, especially for someone like him that struggles with addiction. But when you see that, you know, people want to, people have to want that change, right? And that's hard, and it's hard for the community. And I think that's the hard thing here, is that, you know, people need supportive factors. And, you know, when, when that person doesn't want that change, it makes it that much more difficult for this type of project to be successful, um, and, and the sentiment in the community. I wonder, when you say you, you're going to work with the members of the community, you know, what does that mean to the taxpayers in the city, um, who are going to be burdened with providing those services? I'd be interested in what your impact is on first response to your places, all of your places. Because I'd like to know what the taxing measures are on the fire department. What's that going to do to utilizing our resources from the fire district? Um, how long is that going to tie up our ambulances? Because it is regular, and we do have senior housing here. The one thing that these two communities do really well is prioritize seniors. And we have a lot of senior housing, um, same, we have more than one mo, more than one mobile home park, um, by the way. But, uh, but thanks. Yeah, yeah, well. But, you know, when you talk, when you talk about that, you know, Laverne has their own police department, San Dimas contracts with the sheriff's department, and that is a, an island, as someone referred to it, as, uh, of unincorporated area. And so, you know, some cities have solved problems by deeming places public nuisances and things like this, like when people go and they see that a, a small business that doesn't want to, or a large, big box, doesn't want to address commercial theft, and next thing you know, they say, well, hey, maybe this place is a public nuisance. And what happens? We have to become responsive because of the crimes that are going out into the community from the tentacles originating from this place. So I bring that up because I wonder, San Dimas Sheriff's Department contract is going to be burdened with some of this. The citizens of Laverne and their law enforcement and their fire department may be burdened with this if the county fire district is busy, um, you know, in some sort of mutual aid adventure. So I really, I really wonder about that. And I'm really happy and I thank the supervisor and her staff for, for, one, stepping up with the traffic study. I think that's important. Um, I think it's super important that we're here tonight. But, um, you know, I've been in government a little bit, uh, in my career, and I almost wonder if this is just an exercise in getting the $7 million. And, and I really don't want to believe that, but I have to wonder, since I haven't heard from you, and I, have any of you heard from them? I mean, that's, that's where I'm at with that. So it's great we're here, and it's great that we're, uh, we're having these public meetings. But, um, I think outreach has been the theme of everybody's comments tonight. Um, I do hope you can get some of that data related to, um, responses. I understand your response at the last meeting was that that's the county's responsibility. Um, you did say that the county would be responsible for law enforcement service response, uh, and that's a sensible response, because you're in county, a county parcel, but that's not pragmatically what's going to happen as it relates to where that's going to come from, unless you have a county car. What's funny about that, in terms of law enforcement deployment, it's a pocket. So the odds are that you're going to have a San Dimas Sheriff's Station or City Deputy respond to that first. respond to that first and handle that before you're going to have a county area car get there. And not to get in the weeds on that, but I think it's important to note that it's not without any impact to these cities. It's a very real impact that you guys are going to have, and I really hope that you take to heart the things that people have said here tonight. And, and as I said earlier, I am very much supportive of what you guys are doing in terms of the mission and the cause. I'm hopeful, if you are willing to talk about alternate sites for this project, I'm 100% willing and committed to helping you find that, even if it's within our city, and I can think of two places right now that are available to do something like this, but that are more suitable locations for this than what you're looking at right now. So that being said, I want to thank you for everything you've done and everything you've shared tonight. Thank you to the community for coming out. You're not, not heard, and I think you've seen that here. I want to thank the supervisor and all of her staff that have been here. As we've gone through this journey together, it's not been, it's not been without its bumps, but we're, we are where we are today, and I hope, as everyone else has said, that we can, we can move forward in a way that is productive, meaningful, and will help us achieve our common goal, which I think is helping people, improving people's quality of life, their mental health. And that's not just the people we're looking to house, but it's the people that reside here and the people that do business here. So thank you so much, and thank you, Laverne, San Dimas, for getting together.
Councilman Ebner?
I'll be brief. Usually have a few pages of notes, but I'll be brief this time. I, I'm not happy about the way that this came about and the way we were surprised or side, hit from the side by it out, out of nowhere, it seemed. I'm especially not happy that the state has taken away so much local control from both the city and the county. After all, we're elected to, as my colleagues have said, improve and maintain the quality of life, maintain standards, and in this kind of a situation, make sure projects fit the neighborhood. Make sure projects fit the neighborhood. They don't all, they don't have to be identical to the neighborhood, as I always say, but they have to fit in with the neighborhood and, and, and not be, I guess you would say, offensive. Now, I support permanent supportive housing. I think that members of our community who will be living in this kind of a project, it's a good service for them, it's the right kind of service, it is the permanent kind of housing for, for those who are formerly homeless. It makes me think a lot about the people in our five mobile home parks, one of which we own, because they have small, small units. Yeah. Sorry, we're going to try to get two more so it can equal. But no, they, they have small units. They, a lot of them have lower incomes, a lot of them are seniors, and our, our park is a senior-only park. And so there's all kinds of housing. These folks are not going to be moving from the project across the street to the Fox Glen neighborhood. That's not their goal. Their goal is to have a roof over their head and be, like any other tenant, an apartment dweller who follows the rules, gets into the syst, gets into the, gets into the lease based on a background check and all the other kinds of things. So I'm encouraged that they're going to be coming into it through the coordinated entry system because that system ensures that they're not, we're not plucking them out from in front of Albertson's and taking them to the leasing office. They're going through a system. I'm encouraged that National Corps is going to be not only building a project, but managing it. I'm encouraged by the services that are being promised to be onsite. All these things are going to make the project a success. I've visited a couple of their projects, and as I've told them personally, and I've told others, the project as proposed was way too big. The project as it's proposed now is still too big. So if, if the project could be smaller, and we, we need these kinds of places, we need more of them, but they need to be spread around more. But if it could be smaller, and my personal suggestion would be, if you could go two stories in the front, two stories in the back, three stories in the middle, and I don't know how many people you would house, but that kind of project in this site would work. There would have to be a few things, the sidewalks in issue, there's, there's a few things that need to be worked out. So I don't support the project as it is now. I agree with my colleagues, and Ryan mentioned two sites that I'd like to know about because we do need to have some alternatives. But, so I'll, I'll, I thank everyone for coming out, expressing your opinions very loudly and very fervently. And with that, I would just say that, again, a project like this is good. It needs to liken the places that I visited, where neighbors around there actually praise the units, the, the types of projects that National Corps has done, in the neighborhood. They need to fit in with the neighborhood. Thank you.
The beauty of being last is everything's already been said about a dozen times. I do want to take the opportunity to just relate back. I can remember on April the 18th, at about 10 o'clock in the morning, and I was riding with the city manager, when one of my fellow councilmen called and said, "Did you know that this, that this county was about to give $7 million away in about a minute?" And I go, "What are you talking about?" And then all of a sudden, I started hearing about a project. And April the 18th, at 10 o'clock in the morning, and I'm being told that there's, there was a lot of talking back in, on the 22nd. There are, there are people that are wrong here, and I'm not sure that it's the county, I'm not sure it's the city, I'm not sure it's National Corps, but I do believe that it's our, our fellow Californians up in Sacramento who have now determined that they're going to take the National Corps, they're going to take the county, and they're going to take, that, you know, National Corps is looking at a way to make money. Okay? You're not taking the freedom away from what we have now. So, but I do want to thank, you know, Catherine, thank you very much for pulling it. It gave us an opportunity to find out what was going on, and I think meeting after meeting, we, we seemed to find more. And I'm hoping that as we progress down this path, we really find out what the real truth is, and not the truth that being sold down, you know, by all sectors, you know, especially from the state who says we have to do this. National Corps, well, thank you for coming today. I know it's not easy sitting over there like someone said, like, you know, contestants or something like that answering questions. And this county staff, thank you very much. I know that Catherine's staff has been beat up to death over this whole thing, and we apologize, but it came as a real shock to us.
That's okay.
I will, I will say that just recently, I had the opportunity to spend a meeting with Catherine and, and Mayor Heffron, and to talk about homeless, and it just wakes her eyes up a little bit more about what it is. It is a problem, but we all know that's the wrong place. It's not going, you know, I'm, I'm not going to sit back and watch this little postage stamp end up controlling what's going on between us and San Dimas. And some people wanted to ask me a question about, hey, you said something back a while back, something like, "Hell no, we won't go." And right now, hopefully, we're planning on bending over and continuing this project, but like Councilman Vienna said, there may be other places, other locations. And the only time I've met with them was last, you know, the last time we were here. I said hello, I waited in line, just like everybody else, and, but yeah, I've never heard anything from them. But I have questions, but I don't think any of us want to hear my questions right now. So if one of you people out here will say, "I moved to a jern," I will say, "A jern." Only one, only one. A jern. Thank you very much for coming.